Right. We're going to be prompt tonight. It is seven o'clock. With that, we'll call Union Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and our Treasurer, Tim Rice, has a flag for those in attendance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Clerk Cody, would you give us a roll call of the board, please?
Clerk Cody here, Union Township, Isabella County, Michigan. Supervisor Milky.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County, State of Michigan.
Trustee Brown.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County, State of Michigan.
Trustee Thering.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County, State of Michigan.
Trustee Bills.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County, State of Michigan.
Trustee Howk.
Here, Isabella County. Here, Union Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
Treasurer Rice.
Here, Union Township, Isabella County, Michigan.
All are here.
Thank you very much. Entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. I will note that Chair of the County Commission, Jim Horton, is here this evening. And as usual, he's our liaison for the township and would like to address the board. So if the board would be willing to, we could add him under Presentations behind our Community and Economic Development Director presentation.
I move to accept the agenda and add Mr. Horton.
I support.
There needs to be another thing added.
Yep.
Clerk Cody? You want to articulate?
The consideration approval to prepare preliminary project cost estimates and develop the formal petition of the establishment of the paving special assessment district for Carriage Hill Estates, number one and two subdivision. That one.
Trustee Bills, would you be okay with that amendment?
Yeah.
The support came from Trustee Howk, is that correct? Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Brown, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the agenda with two additions, one for Commissioner Horton under Presentations, item B, and item H regarding Special Assessment District. Any discussion?
No.
See none. Clerk Cody, the motion, as I just stated, would you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Trustee Howk?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
And trustee.
Just lost her.
That's not good.
Hold on.
Say Bills?
I hear her.
Bills, yes.
Yes.
All are here. Or, oh, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Cody. We have no public hearings, I'm sorry, presentations. We do have a presentation from our Community and Economic Development Department Director, Rodney Nanny. And with that, I'd be just happy to give him the floor. He's not on my screen, but I know he's here.
I am here.
Oh, there you are. I see it now. Thank you.
So I'm happy to have the opportunity to take you on a quick tour of the Community and Economic Development Department. For those that can see my screen at the moment, see my background, you can, you can see that I have a lot on my mind as I serve as a director of this, this department. And so I'm going to take you on a quick tour of the things that are on my mind. You have in your packet a little more detailed version of this, this business where fleshed it out a little bit more in a graphic that was fun to put together. And then also you have in your packet a summary of the services that we provide and how they reflect implementation of the, of the, of your, your goals as expressed in the, in the global end statement. So in everything we do, in all these elements, we interact with, with the public in almost, almost every element of this. The, whether it's residents, business owners, land developers, property owners, a variety of ways we interact with the public in this department. It really is a thread that passes through all, all the aspects of what, what we do. I'd like to start with the, the building services side of things. We'll kind of wander around a little bit. Building Services side, we have, obviously we have Building Official is our key, key employee in that, that area. We have a brand new Building Official, as you're aware, Larry Summer was promoted earlier this month. A long-serving rental inspector to take over that, that position as Building Official. He has started into that transition. We are, of course, been served for the last several years through a contract with Meckin Associates and for the last eight months with John Lipchick. It's our Building Official and John has done great work. And we're in the process, process of transitioning him out of that position. He's, he's been very helpful in, in making that transition with Larry. And we're looking forward to, to Larry taking over this role fully as, in the next, next week or a few weeks. So the Building Official handles building inspections, issuing building permits and certificates of occupancy. And just, I'm not going to hit you with a lot of numbers, but a couple of numbers. Last year, which was actually despite COVID, a very busy year. The Building Official connected over 700 inspections associated with approved building permits. He also issued 117 certificates of occupancy for new buildings. Very busy year. Those certificates of occupancy are particular, one of the ways that we interact also with other agencies in this department. The township has a Building Official, but we do not provide plumbing, mechanical, or electrical inspections. Isabel County does that for us in the township. And, but, but whenever a certificate of occupancy is issued, our Building Official is also certifying those inspections, that those inspections have been completed. And so we, he coordinates with the county on that to make sure all that gets done correctly and before a certificate is issued. In addition to, to our Building Official, the other key employee in this part of the, of our, our department is Amy Peak. She's our Building Services Clerk. And she's the one that makes sure that, that we all keep going in the right direction. She is, provides very essential service to, to track inspections, building, scheduled building inspections. Make sure permits are, reviews are being handled because even within a building permit application, that's actually reviewed by several different groups within our department, our township, including the Public Services Department where water and sewer issues are in question. Our Township Assessor where land boundaries or lot splits or things like that are part of the, the, the review. And also Peter Gall, an Arizona Administrator, to ensure that, that the building activity meets our zoning regulations. So there's, there's a great deal of coordination that Amy oversees. She does that through our, our BSNA building module software. BSNA is, I think Sherry may have talked about this last time a bit, but BSNA is a local government management software company based here in Michigan down near Lansing. And, and the township is used as their software basically throughout our, our structure. But the Community Development Department, in particular, the building services area uses extensively to track inspections in permits. The, the next area that I'd like to talk about, and as I said, we're going to bounce around, it's going to be quick, is community development. This is an area that, that is predominantly focused on housing. This is an area where our rental inspector is our key employee. One of the questions that, that comes up regularly is why do we, why do we inspect rental housing in the township? And the short answer to that question is, is directly related to one of your ends. And that is the, the one that references that residents will have a safe environment. And that safe environment for, for rental housing is, is brought about in significant part by the fact that we require annual inspections. I have a personal history with rental inspections in another community where I once owned a home. Was an owner occupied rental. I had a couple of apartments in it. And, and it had been part of a rental housing inspection program for about a decade before we bought it. And as a result, despite it being an 1860 vintage house, all the elements, electrical, mechanical, all that, all those, those, that infrastructure had been replaced within the last decade. So I knew exactly what I was getting into and had a level of comfort with that. In the same way, those that, that, that live in rental housing in the township have a level of comfort because of our inspection program. A key story that I'd like to share with regards to this has to do with two properties in the township. One is called the Villages of Bluegrass. The other one is Springbrook Townhomes. Both are on the east side. And both of those projects in 2019 were inspected by our rental inspector. And during those inspections, he noticed that there were some pretty significant deterioration in structural concrete and steel in the stairways, the landings, and decks that were associated with these developments. The end result of that, of noticing things and those particular things was about a year's worth of work between the rental inspector, our Building Official, and the, the owner, the property owners to completely replace that infrastructure. They replaced all the decks, all the stairways, all the landings. And, and the replacement elements are far more weather tight, far, far more structurally sound than, than even the originals were. The result is that, that, that these improvements, which will last for many years, ensure a safe environment for those folks that live in those, those communities. The, the next item, just continue our tour, is economic development. And this is an area where, where, where my role is predominant. I have the predominant employee for this part of it. And, and in this area, our, our interactions are with the business community primarily, but also with some outside agencies. We, we coordinate with the Middle Michigan Development Corporation, also with the Chamber of Commerce, and with the Mount Pleasant Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Much of what I do here is, is looking at, at implementing our, our end that talks about having business friendly regulations and policies for the township. This is something I'm always looking at when we're looking at, at how we regulate land development and such. We'll talk about that more. But it also involves having the opportunity to go out and visit with some of our members of our business community. COVID has made that a challenge. But, but we've had some opportunities to do that. If one visit in particular, I'd just like to, to, to share a quick story. That is, early on, right before COVID, I had the opportunity to visit with Jeff Harrison, the owner of Birch Tank and Truck. And just learn more about his businesses. We got a little tour. We also got, learned a little bit in our conversation about his plans, about things he was interested in doing. But most importantly, I learned that we had a problem. And that problem was that, that our industrial park, the Enterprise Park over Enterprise Drive, Pickard, and Summerton, that at the, along the edge of that park, there was some underutilized and vacant land that is planned for industrial, but is not actually currently served fully by, by public water or public sewer services. And so out of that one conversation came a discussion with our Economic Development Authority Board. Ultimately resulted in some, some money being budgeted in this year's budget for a preliminary evaluation from an engineering perspective. And, and looking at that area, that project hasn't started yet, but it also supports the work that our Public Services Department is currently doing to, to get underway with, with updating the sanitary sewer pump station that, that serves that area. All of that came out of one conversation with one business owner. And we've had opportunities to visit with others and had similar experiences. The other, on the economic development side, another new item, or recent item is, is my service on the, on the Joint Airport Operations and Management Board for, basically in coordination with the city of Mount Pleasant. I've been pleased to have the opportunity to represent the township on that board and to learn more about the airport operations. The airport, of course, is in the township, but owned by the city. And it substantially benefits the entire community from an economic development perspective. So looking forward to working with that, that group and with, with the city to maximize the economic benefit of, of the airport for the community. Moving on in our quick tour, the, I'd like to move on to ordinance enforcement for just a minute. And talk about that element that here are, our key employees, Peter Gall, he's our zoning administrator. He also serves as our ordinance enforcement official. He's our point person when we get a, receive a complaint. Much of our ordinance enforcement activities is complaint driven. We don't have regular patrols in the township. However, we do have lots of eyes in the street. We received word from township employees, some noticed something that doesn't seem right, also from neighbors or from officials or others, sometimes it's even just somebody driving by a site and says, that just doesn't look right. Can you look into that? And that's, that's what Peter's role is to, to initiate an investigation. He will, any complaint that we receive, we do check into it. If he identifies a violation, that, that really starts the enforcement process. Sometimes a complaint actually doesn't involve an ordinance violation. But the, what he, when he does see something that, that involves a violation, that's also tracked through our BSNA software. The building module has an enforcement element where, where we track, track all those elements from beginning to end. The violations can include things like tall, tall grass. If it's more than 12 inches high, it is a violation. It can involve junk cars. It can involve a violation of the zoning ordinance. In, no matter what the issue is, our goal is always the same, and that is to bring the property back into compliance. This is not about punishing people. It's not about taking people to court if we can possibly avoid it. It is all about bringing the property back into compliance. And, and so the first thing we do is, is informal, that informal contact and notification of some sort to let them know they have a problem. And more often than not, simply that moment of education will bring about change. We, many of our violations get corrected simply because they weren't aware that it was an issue and then they corrected. Sometimes we have to do a little more, a formal notice. We'll, we'll get some more moving when, when you have a deadline date on it, for example. But there are some cases where we have to do more than that. And we do have a very effective tool, as it turns out, and that's our tickets. What's called civil infraction notice, but it's actually like a traffic ticket. And it is remarkable. Our, our initial fine is only $50, but it's remarkable what that $50 fine will do. We've had a remarkable number of cases where, where people haven't responded to anything, any other encouragement or pressure to correct the violation, but they get that, that little citation, that $50 fine and boom, the issue's fixed. If that doesn't work, we, we, we do have legal action if needed. Fortunately, it doesn't happen often. Right now, we only have one case that's in the township attorney's hands. And that's for a, a building code violation from several years ago. But, but all of our ordinance enforcement efforts, as I said, are always focused on trying to resolve the problem. So you can see in monthly reports, for example, we're happy to work with people. If it takes time to get it fixed, we'll work with them on that as long as they're, they're moving in the right direction. And so in some of your monthly reports, you'll see the same item over and over again. But you also see some notations about what has changed. And whether or not they're still following the corrective action plan that they agreed to do. The, moving from ordinance enforcement, like to move over to, to the planning side for just a moment. This is near and dear to my heart, being a training planner, ladies planner. This is an area where we're working primarily with the Planning Commission, which is the body that is charged with looking out over the horizon, looking out at the future. And what do we want our community to be like when it grows up? What do we want our community, our township to be like five, 10, 15, 20, or even more years from now? And the primary vehicle for, for that is our master plan. The master plan is, is a policy document. It is prepared and adopted by the, the Planning Commission. It is also typically has had final approval by the, by the Board of Trustees. And it's, it really is, it is the land use policy for the community. And it, and it does look to the future. And it, and it does attempt to describe a future that, that we can implement through, through the tools that we have available to us. And among those tools is actually our last area, and that is zoning and land development. The zoning ordinance is a very important tool to implement the master plan. It is also a very important tool to, to help bring about the character, the desired, the desired visual character, the desired land use character, the desired vibrancy of the, of the community that we're looking for. One of the important reasons why we updated the zoning ordinance last year was to make sure we had an ordinance that, that, that was aimed in the right direction, that was aimed in the, in the desired direction that, that we have as a township that's expressed in your global ends, that's expressed in the master plan to, to, in terms of that, that character of the community, the mix of land uses, where development is taking place and what that development looks like. From, from our staff perspective, our goal is, is, is often with, with regards to this category is looking at applications, whether it be a rezoning or a special use application, application like the one you have on your agenda tonight. Or what's very common, a site plan application where we're looking at a specific development and ensuring, making sure that, that development meets the, the requirements that, that have been adopted into that ordinance. In everything we do, in any of these categories, we're always going right back to the, the established policies of the township, right back to your ends, right back to the master plan, land use policies. You know, much of what we do is, is focused on establishing a safe environment, whether it's rental housing or, or building officials activities. We also are trying to implement the policies related to a walkable and bikeable community and establishing an economic friendly policies, regulations for the, for the township. These are all, all the things that are on my mind every day as I serve in this role, which I'm grateful to do. And, and this brings us also to the end of our tour. And so I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I enjoyed that, Rodney. Thank you very much.
Same here.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll, I'll third that comment. And planning's near and dear to me as well. And just from all the time I sat on Planning Commission. So just another shout out to Lisa for serving on that Planning Commission for a while and James taking that over. And they're lucky to get to work with you on that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yeah, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. With that, that'll move us to an item we added on the agenda under Presentations, Commissioner Chair Jim Horton. Commissioner Horton, I just want to remind you per our conversation today that if, if you have anything to say specific to the SUP that's on our agenda tonight, that should be done during public comment. But otherwise, you're, you're free to do your, your duty and service as our township liaison to the county. Thanks for being here.
Thank you Supervisor Milky. And thank you to the board for allowing me to jump in as Section B under number five. I know you guys have a long agenda tonight, so I'm not going to step on your toes or trustee Dr. Bills' toes, because I know she's the county liaison. So thank, thank you for, you know, having me come on board. Real quickly, my name is Jim Horton. I'm, I live at 3089 Hunter's Trail, Mount Pleasant, Michigan, Union Township. I am the County Commissioner for District Four, and that is primarily Union Township and Chippewa Township north of M20. And since the beginning of this year, I have been very fortunate to be voted by my Commissioners as Chairperson of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners. And I'll be honest to say, it's been a very interesting six months. Moving on from that statement, we'll get into just real quickly to the budget, the budget 2022. We are, our County Administrative Controller, Margaret McAvoy, is meeting with her department heads, elected officials, everything like that. And we are working towards the budget. I see Vice Chairman Hope is on the Hollywood Squares version of Union Township's Zoom meeting. I see his name in there. He is Chairperson of our Finance Administration. And his Finance Administration Committee will be actively dealing with the budget. Something that I know very well, having served as past Chairman of that committee. One of the bigger issues coming up on, obviously, is several weeks ago, we approved a ballot proposal for the 911 surcharge. County Administrator McAvoy is probably biting her fingertips right now. Hopefully I don't, she says I can't comment or do any type of rah rah and I'm going to have to vote for that, so I'm not going to. I'm just saying that that is a necessary thing in our community and that will be on upcoming ballot. Next up is a good thing, I guess. If you look at the American Rescue Plan, COVID is, there's nothing, I'm going to say there's nothing good that comes out of COVID-19. But this is something that if you're going to put a positive spin on anything, the American Rescue Plan and the dollars amount received to Union, excuse me, to Isabella County, roughly two years of 13 million, 6.5 million each year. And I tell you, that was a, it was a little nervous signing my name to $6.5 million of, of, of money coming into the county. I think I, I grabbed that pen and I did, I make sure I signed my name correctly on that one. So that, that, that's a good thing to have. Obviously, you know, how that money is spent, how that money is allocated. The board did some on their last meeting allocating some funds. But obviously going forward, that's a kind of a wait and see. I think the township, the county, city, various conships, various entities or tribe will probably all sit down and have some type of say and try to do some community good with that, that those dollars amount. So right now, I think the county is kind of taking a wait and see attitude. Obviously, we've got some things in our county upcoming, and that's going to put me to my next statement. As far as the jail, I'm not going to say, I'm going to hold true to Supervisor Milky's statement to me earlier on the phone. And I'm doing my best not to say anything, but I will probably make a quick comment, public comment, as part, not as part of the jail team, but as a personal note. But just as the jail, as we're moving forward with the jail, I want to state that it's my primary responsibility as Board Chair to make sure that this project continues to move forward and caveat that with being responsible to our community. I think it's very important that we engage with the community, that we talk with the community, and that we're totally transparent to the community. And again, that's, that's a, that's a probably the largest issue dealing with the governmental energy in a long time. I know certainly Isabella Town, excuse me, Isabella County, that's a large issue. So again, I thank you for bringing me forward and letting me speak. And if anybody has any questions or comments to me, I'd be more than happy to take them. Otherwise, feel free to reach out. I think most of you have my cell numbers, have my email addresses. If not, they're right on the county website. You can easily grab them or get hold of somebody that does have them and contact me. Because I'm readily available to, to, to both the board and anybody in the community. That's what we do as Commissioners. We are, we make ourselves available and we look forward to working with you and for you and all that stuff. And it's been a long day. So if anybody has any questions, if not, I'm going to try to jump back in on a public comment, but I'll probably have to do the hand raise thing on that, which is fine. I can figure that out. So anybody have any questions?
I'm looking for any hands. I, I do have a comment, Commissioner Horton. I, I just want to say thank you to, to you and your entire board, the commission, with regards to your leadership during COVID. I know it's, it's been, as you said, there's not, nothing good comes out of COVID, right? But your leadership as a county has been instrumental in, in bringing some calm, I think. And so it's, from my perspective, I want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, Brian. I'm glad you mentioned that. I know Administrative Controller McAvoy, she thought I was done speaking, so she thought she could put down her soft. We are, we are planning to do something, as you know, some of the restrictions have been lifted just this week, and they have been lifted ongoing. So the Board of Commissioners right now, and I'll, and I'll save this and I'll probably get, and I'm not looking at my phone because it's probably buzzing right now. But we're planning on going, our first board meeting in July, which will be the third Tuesday, we are planning to go live that meeting. I don't believe it's going to be at our county building. It'll probably be at an offsite location that our building that the county owns. But we're, we're planning to go live and hopefully. Um but we're we're planning to go live and hopefully we can achieve that goal um to get some sense of normalcy back. Uh I think all of us, all of us look forward to those days that we can, if we can have normalcy back again. But that that is what the county is shooting for all to go live the third Tuesday. Have our board of commissions meeting, our our business meeting at four PM be live going forward. So thank you for bringing that up, Brian. I wasn't gonna do, I wasn't gonna do that. I thought I'd give Margaret a little bit of um not not worry for me publicly speaking, but I you you brought it up, so I thought I'd throw that.
Uh and and I didn't know, so I didn't mean to take that from Margaret either, but I wanted to say thank you.
No, Margaret, Margaret's fine. I'm gonna get an email and a call and all that stuff. Just know that I represent your interest on that one. So there you go.
All right. Any any other further questions or comments for Chair Horton?
And this, if I could also request, do I have to on the public comment? I will be publicly commenting. Can I can I just go unmute the video or do I have to do the, you make the decision. I'll work either way with you guys. So.
Raise your hand like the rest of public and you'll be addressed and you can turn on your audio and video.
I will do that. Thank you so much, everyone, for letting me speak again. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, that moves us to uh item six on our agenda, which has uh no content, which is public hearings this evening. So that will move us to public comment. Uh public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Uh note, this is an opportunity for comments only. Uh questions to the board will not be answered at this time. If you have specific questions, uh contact our township Paul at nine eight nine seven seven two forty-six hundred. If you do choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And for those that this may be one of your first Zoom meetings, which um boy, I think everybody's been inundated this with this last sixteen months or so, eighteen months. At the bottom of your screen, if if you're using a a laptop or computer, if you move your mouse, there's uh icons that listed reactions. And if you click on that, there's a raise your hand uh so that you can speak. Um if you're on a phone, I believe it's star nine, press star nine, and that will signify to our staff that you're raising your hand. And so we'll kind of keep an eye out for that. And uh I think, I don't know whose hand I saw first. Can you know who raised their hand first by chance?
Um it looks like Shelley did.
That's what I was thinking too.
Top on the list on my screen.
Okay, be happy to welcome Shelley if you don't allow her to unmute. This is a a note to um Shelley eyes, we're waiting for you to unmute. Just to aid so that you're able to get your thoughts together and make sure they're concise, um our clerk our our clerk has a sign uh that she'll raise up at at thirty seconds, correct? Clerk Cody? So Lisa Cody has assigned just to so you'll know that you have an opportunity to finish up what you have to say. So thanks for being here, Shelley. The floor is yours.
Thanks for having me. Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. Wasn't letting you for a minute. Okay, thank you very much. Uh my name's Shelley Smith. I'm coming from three five one five Riverbank Trail in Mount Pleasant, that's Deerfield Township. And I'm here on behalf of the Mount Pleasant Discovery Museum Board. Um I realize I have the three minutes and I have put my thoughts into a letter which I presented to or I brought in to you all today. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read that. I'm writing today to voice questions and concerns over the potential new location of the Isabella County Jail to the southeast of the Mount Pleasant Discovery Museum, the location which necessitating the shared use of Remus Road for access to both buildings. And I am requesting the township tables a final decision on this project until a public hearing is held with ample notice and explanation of such a meeting and the project's impact to our community at large. While I understand from other community members that the sheriff's department is a good neighbor and I appreciate the need for an updated jail facility in Isabella County, I see a strong conflict of interest for the proposed new site with the family oriented Discovery Museum, not to mention the Community Recreation Center and Elementary School nearby. As for the Discovery Museum, it relies on fundraising for operations, but also financially relies greatly on visitors, field trips, special programming and special events. The Discovery Museum hosts on average forty thousand visitors each year, one hundred fifty field trips each year, and thirty-five percent of our visitors are from out of town. The museum is an attraction for families in our community and it is a draw for families to visit from outside of our community. I noticed that is something that um the presentation addressed was bringing in people to our community. In the past and hopefully in the future, the museum has held community events on our own and in conjunction with Maury Courts and Papa's Pumpkin Patch. These popular, community-engaging events have often been free and host as many as one thousand five hundred guests across both museum and recreation center campuses, including both parking lots. Additionally, our parking lot and our outdoor exhibit Friendship Field have families in them every day. My concerns are not about the visuals of the new jail nor the noise of the sirens. Rather, I am concerned both for the safety of our guests, families with small children and our staff. Also concerning is how the potential stigma that prisoners next door may impact our fundraising and visitor rate. We are given to understand that jail trustees may be going back and forth to the jail on work release on a daily basis, taking them past the children visiting inside the museum in the outside exhibit, in the parking lot and in our front pollinator garden in wetland. When attending the planning commission meeting on this project, sorry, I heard no clear safety plan for releasing inmates, whether for work release or parole. There was no clear plan for inmates exiting the jail campus and where they go from there. There is no procedure for how they will safely exit off of Remus Road. How comfortable will families be with released in inmates walking around looking for a ride? And how do police cars racing down Remus Road impact our outdoor community events? How is that safe for the participants or police officer? Is that my warning? Only two weeks ago, from a secondhand source, we have learned that Union Township regulation does not require okay, I just we we don't feel it's been an entirely transparent process. I feel like it's gonna greatly impact the museum and I would really like you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley.
Um with that, I think Commissioner Horton was the next hand that I saw.
Yeah.
You'd ask him to unmute and.
Okay, I can everyone here when you see me, okay?
Yep.
Just real quick and a personal note, this is a, this is not anywhere near shape or form as a county commissioner or chairperson or anything like that, but I'm not gonna try to separate that either, but uh from June of nineteen ninety-seven until February, at the end of February of twenty twenty-one, I had the pleasure of being associated with, I believe, was the finest pharmacy in the United States of America, Downtown Drugs. But that's being said, um I would be remiss in stating that during that timeframe, I would, I I was there pretty much every day. I went in after hours, all hours of night, every day of the week. And never once did we ever have a problem with break-ins in the evening. Never once did we have a problem with a robbery. Never once did I ever feel unsafe going into the building late at night while I was never accustomed. Um and I believe the the big reason for that is what was right across the parking lot. And that is the 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 sheriff's department. Let's not forget, we're not only putting a jail at that location, we're also putting the sheriff's department, relocating the sheriff's department. And that, to me, is a big deterrent. I'm sure you read in the papers all the time pharmacies being broken into, pharmacies being robbed at gunpoint. Never happened to Downtown Drugs. Then and since nineteen ninety-seven, then I've been there and I'm not aware of that ever happening before me. So again, that's that's that is, no one ever wandered in from the streets, no one ever wandered in that was released, no one ever uh family members that came into the community to pick them up. Never want, never, never created any issues for Downtown Drugs. Uh I can state that as someone actively involved in the community. Uh and again, that's a personal note. So I I don't, I don't, again, I'm not saying that as someone trying to sell the jail project at all. I'm just giving you my representation, my statement since June of ninety-seven. And again, that was someone, and you know, if that was ever gonna happen to to a business or to a person in Isabella County, it was gonna happen to me going in after hours or to a pharmacy that has, you know, obviously with the break-ins involved. So again, that's just my statement. I thank you for giving me the time. First time I ever raised my hand on this and and you know what, it's kind of feels good to be on the other side of it and be actually uh engaging in public comment. And thank you for that. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Did we need name and address? I know he said his name, but.
Hey, would you restate, would you state that just for the record again, please? You're muted.
There you go.
All right. Uh yeah, so sorry about that. I should have done that. I I know better. Thirty eighty-nine Hunter's Trail, Mount Pleasant, Michigan. Uh thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I need some help here. I see uh five hands. Um and I haven't been able to keep track of who is next. Kim, do you have any feeling for?
Um next up was Robert Brock, I think Brocker. I'm not sure I pronounced that right, but he's next on the list.
All right, Mr. Brocker, if you can uh unmute. And and I I do want to know, while we're waiting for him to unmute, uh we did receive that letter from Shelley Smith, as she indicated, and she read the majority of it. And I I want to make sure that all of our board members got that in time and were able to read that prior to our meeting.
Yes.
Hi there, uh Robert Brocker. I live at sixteen forty-six East High Street uh with my wife and I have three small children under the age of eight. Um I'm legally blind myself. I don't drive. I'm, I missed, I I I all due respect to the commissioner, uh Mount Pleasant has a low crime rate anyway, and he's in a downtown area. It's not next to his house. Uh there's a stigma that that goes with it. Um we had talked about how how important the master plan is. That was something that was talked about as as something that we all hold true to. And now we're willing to just throw that out for a variance on 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 a major, major thing that'll impact real estate and everybody around us. When we bought our house, we did so with the knowledge that we were in a residential area. Not that we would suddenly have a jail and and I and I hate to to get angry here, but this, in all my years of government practicing law, I have never heard of such a remarkably bad idea putting a correctional facility across the street from a children's museum and uh 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 a community center with a school down the street. Of all the places in town, this is the place you have picked. I I mean, it's astronomical. And you're talking about high street is already over. You, it it it's not even properly uh people speed through here already. It's a thirty-five mile an hour. Nobody does that. Is my time up?
No, no, you're good.
I mean, I'm I'm just mystified. How how are you gonna, that's a dangerous corner that has accidents all the time. You have a school right there. How are, how are you gonna handle traffic? And and all that sort of stuff, all the places to put this thing, you want to put it across the road from a children's museum. I mean, really? That's all I have. I I I can't even believe this.
Thank you for your comments. Um Kim Smith, uh do you know who might be next? I'm letting you try to police this. No pun intended.
Scott Vine.
Scott Vine, hopefully pronouncing that properly.
Nouncing that right.
If you would unmute.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Very good.
Right. Uh my name is Scott Vin. I'm with Integrated Architecture um from forty Ottawa in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And um if that was appropriate time, I'd like to just give a quick overview of the project, or should I wait until you get to the the business, new business?
This would be an appropriate time.
Is there a time? Okay. Um first, I want to just thank thank the the group for the time to present quickly. My my three minutes, I want to just give an overview of the project and clarify a few things that that we're hearing. Um hopefully, you'll see from our submission that much planning and thought has gone into the site layout, the floor plan and the exterior design. Um and we're very excited to share it with you. Sheriff Maine, who's on the call, can probably explain it much better than I can, but the current facility that they're in today has obviously been a good neighbor and a community asset for many, many years in its current location. That's been the intent from the beginning is to continue to be a good neighbor and a community asset um in this new location by creating a facility that, you know, leverages current and relevant uh practices and a well-figured-out site results resulting in a design that um community can see with pride. Few key attributes to the project. And of course, our team is here to answer any further questions, but in terms of site layout, the building was intentionally set back from east Remus Road by approximately four hundred feet to provide a natural buffer uh to the building. Um there's two points of connection to the site. The first entry, which is to the west, is the public entry. And the second connection further to the east is for staff and service. Uh we've landscaping on the site in accordance with the ordinance and to intentionally provide screening to adjacent properties and the movements, the entry uh and the building experience. And has been designed with strict cutoffs to keep light on the site and out of the night sky. In terms of the building design, the sheriff's office and the main entry are positioned on the public-facing side of the building with the housing screened from that, from the public and behind that um that office space. And this works well um so that the windows and the transparency for the office towards the public side, you know, provides welcoming the civic experience and the 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 housing side, which doesn't have any windows and is the backside of the building, you will not hear or see inmates as their daylight requirements are satisfied uh through skylights. A large entry canopy, a brick facade, flagpoles, windows are all what visitors will see as they approach the building. Certainly not a cold or institutional building with security fencing as you might have expected many years ago with with jail designs. Um planning commission hearing last week and what we're hearing from Shelley, obviously, is that community and community awareness and engagement are important. The project team has started to reach out to the surrounding community and will continue to do so and is happy to provide further insights into the the project need, the project design and the project function. And there's also a regarding um improvements to Remus Road and there's a meeting scheduled with the road commission to clarify that topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh would you uh remain here just in case uh our our board has any questions for you later?
Of course.
Thank you for your time at public comment. And with that, um Kim, help me out. I'm sorry, who do you believe is next?
Christine Dunheaton.
Thank you very much. Uh Christine Dunheaton, uh if you'd be willing to unmute, the floor is yours.
Can you unmute?
Try it, try it again. Okay. Am I unmuted?
You are, yes.
Okay. Uh yeah, I'm uh John Dunheaton, Christine's husband. I just happen to be using her computer tonight. You know how that goes. Anyway, I I fully agree with uh Shelley Smith and and Robert Brocker's comments. Uh you know, we uh we certainly bought our properties here with the uh in intent of having it residential and uh it's, that's part of the original plan, the way it was going. And it's now we want to change the game. And that's gonna change uh our property values, our security. And also, as as a member of the uh Discovery Museum, I I would not be as comfortable going there uh with my grandchildren. And uh it's, you know, also, I I am concerned that the uh that we may be violating a law too, as far as the aspect of the likelihood of of sexual predators being housed at that place and being within a thousand feet of a place where children congregate. Uh and uh possibly even a thousand feet within the uh the Renaissance Center. So you know, those are are things that uh very much concern me. I I agree with Robert Brocker and the aspect that uh there are certainly a lot of other places that would be far better suited than this place. Uh the the county and the township both own other properties that would have enough land available to develop this sort of thing that uh wouldn't require rezoning and basically sticking it to the uh residents who live in the area. Uh I guess that's really all I have to say. Uh and I'll be watching the rest of it here to hear what your comments are.
Could you give us your address, sir?
Certainly, sixteen fifty-four East High Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunheaton.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's see, I believe I saw Judy's hand up for quite a while. Is that next, Kim?
Judy.
Judy, if you'd be willing to unmute, the floor is yours.
I did unmute Judy Smith.
Oh.
At seven thirty, East Bluegrass Road, Union Township, City of Mount Pleasant. And I am a community volunteer. I am a director at the Mount Pleasant Discovery Museum. And also a trustee at Outreach Downtown. And I am, I work with Shelley Smith and everything she said, I agree with her. So I am concerned about the little children at the museum. And I. People, I want you to know, everyone, that people move here because they feel safe and secure. Because the police in our community do a very fine job. County Police, the city police, and New Police. There's every reason to mute, to move to our community. They love the parks, the culture, the college. They love our Maori courts. They love our 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 outreach. They love our museum. And. But why put the jail right where the heart of the community is? There's no reason to put it there. And. It's safe. It's not, it's a safety thing for me, as far as I'm concerned. The police cars are going to be driving fast. I, as I see it, it's a no, a no-go. And so I am requesting that you have a public hearing on this issue. And. That's it. I agree with Shelley and thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Uh, I see, I see two hands raised.
Yep, and I believe Norman's iPhone was next.
All right, Norman's iPhone, would you be willing to unmute and the floor is yours?
I think I'm unmuted. Am I here?
Good.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Greetings, door.
Congratulations to the new board members. From everything that I'm hearing and seeing, you as a board are doing very, very well, coming together. So I appreciate that. I also just want to say briefly that I loved Rodney's screen and him sharing his inner thoughts. That was very entertaining. Thank you, Rodney. And also, I want to thank the Kim and her staff and the board for adding this item on tonight. I know this came at later notice, and I really do appreciate you, you know, putting this onto the agenda. I'll let Kim, when she speaks during this, describe exactly what it is that we're planning on doing. But basically, Tim Warner and myself have circulated an informal petition among our neighbors. To have Carriage Hells Estates, number one and two, Carriage Lane, to become a special assessment district. So that we can have our road repaired. The road is in really bad disarray. It's going to require a grind and pave in order for it to be brought up to to standard. Tim and I, when we were circulating the petition, we both felt what we wanted to do was get like a hundred percent consensus, you know, of our neighbors. We didn't want this to become a contentious issue because we know that there could be financial hardship for some folks. This is a financial burden, especially. You know, coming from subdivision that, you know, we end up, the residents have to foot the bill for the repair of the road. So we wanted to be cognizant of all that and consider it in the process. I want to emphasize that this project is both necessary and urgent. Necessary in that at the last Road Commission meeting that we had when I was on the board. And Tony Casselli was going through all the different gradient of the roads in Union Township. He mentioned that there are about four or five miles of road that were really in bad gray. Carriage Lane was identified as one of those roads. I think it was like an eight, nine on the scale. So in terms of necessity, it definitely is there. Thank you. And also the urgency. Many of the the neighbors are concerned about the financial burden. Like to do is get this done this year, if it's all possible, because we know that next year there's going to be increased costs. And for many of the people, you know, they've cited the the financial burden with the pandemic, health-related issues, ongoing expense. And all we're requesting is, board, if we can expedite this, is done. Thank you. Living in my life.
We need your address, room.
Oh, yes. Fifty-six eighty-five Capric Lane, Mount Pleasant, Union Township.
Thanks for your time tonight. I see Sheriff Maine is the only hand I see at this point. So Sheriff Maine, if you would be willing to unmute, the floor is yours.
Hello, sorry, I'm having some problems with my video. So two oh seven Court Street, Isabel County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Maine. Let's make it real quick here. You know, we you certainly are hearing, you know, some of the concern and taking notes as those folks are talking. You know, when when, to me, there's a lot of misinformation, I think, out there, and and I'll take the blame for that. We've been at countless meetings across the county and the township and in and so forth about this project, but you know, our message. Obviously hasn't gotten to some people, so we that that, I'll take that responsibility. I know we are reaching out to the museum through one of their board members. I have a third party that's working on reaching out to some of the other. That area that are having some concerns. We want to get in front of them. We want to have. And answer those hard questions for those folks and and try to explain kind of what the operation is. I'll just remind everybody that sixty-three years, the Sheriff's Office has been downtown. Walk out my back door, there's a neighbor, residential neighbor, half a block. Block and a half, there's a school. We've been good neighbors. There's been very little issue. Some of the concerns about inmates leaving daily, that that doesn't occur. Some of the concerns about. Or these, they'll be wandering off the streets. That doesn't occur. House from downstate. There's just a lot of misinformation, I think, out there. Again, I apologize. We would certainly get those, that information out to those folks and hopefully. I do know the Ice Arena in Hillland County, seventeen hundred feet from the jail. There's never been an issue there. I really think, and hoping, and I hope to be able to. Do this film where these folks understand that, you know, it wasn't as big a deal as they really thought. Hope that is the case moving forward. I will tell you, you know, the jail is still in disarray and we still want to move forward. There are a lot more based than one might think to put a facility like this. Infrastructure requirements in need, so there isn't a whole lot of locations out there. Being said, I'll I'll kind of stay away from any of the questions.
Thanks. Thank you. Will you remain around as well, Sheriff, just in case there are questions from the board? And I see Lisa Phelps, if you would be willing to unmute, the floor is yours.
I am Lisa Phelps. My address is eight five two four East Walton Road in Shepherd. I'm also the Executive Director of the Mount Pleasant Discovery Museum. I actually toured the jail when I attended the Raleigh Dennis Dennis and Leadership Institute, and while I do strongly agree that we need a new jail. Myself, as well as my staff, have grave concerns about the planned location. As the. Not with the aesthetics of the building. We understand it's going to be a beautiful building and we're happy about that. What we are concerned about. Is the inmate traffic going back and forth, not only. Near our facility, but also Maori courts, the Ice Arena, as well as the Renaissance Public School Academy. I know we say we don't, we've heard prisoners aren't released, but obviously they get out of jail and they're released. They can't hold them there, so they go. So and they're transported back and forth to court. They have work release and they don't, but I'm. I know we're not here to get questions answered, but these are our serious concerns about all this inmate traffic going back and forth. If we are thinking about the vibrancy in the future or our community, I strongly urge you to reconsider this planned location. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll wait just a minute. I see no hands at this point requesting attention, but I'll give it just a minute. Again, if you're not sure how to to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting. If you're on a computer or a phone, there's a reactions icon that you can click on to raise your hand, or if you're calling in via phone, it's star nine. But I am seeing no hands come forward. And with that, we'll close Public Comment at eight P M. And that moves us to support board comments. Item A is current list of boards and commissions, appointments as needed. I'll just lift up again. We have two spots in the zoning board of appeals that are open. One is a regular seat, one is the second alternate. And we still have one seat on the E D A. Otherwise, all of our boards are full. And so we, while we should be proud of that, we should continue to try to recruit citizens in our township to serve and fill those additional three spots. Any board members have comments on that before I move on? Seeing none. We do, I didn't see the June monthly activity report. I'm assuming that will become later, as it says under separate cover. And with that, that moves us to item eight C, Planning Commission and Z B A updates by Mr. Nanny, our Community and Economic Development Director. You're busy tonight. So, but the floor is yours.
Thank you. I I am, I am busy. The. Just a couple of items. First of all, note, the zoning board of appeals did not meet in June. They will not meet in July. But our streak may come to an end. We do have several potential. Variance requests, they're floating around, the people are trying to decide what they're going to do. So there may be an August meeting. The Z B A, we'll see. The the Plank Commission had a very busy June fifteenth. They had six items on the agenda, including two public hearings. One of the items is is the special use permit for the for the New County Jail. And it's on your agenda tonight. Plank Commission did hold a public hearing that that did receive the proper notice. Were required by the State Zoning Act to send that notice out to all surrounding addresses and property, property owners within three hundred feet. And we do have to stick with that number because that's the number in state law. So they they did hold that hearing. And did obviously make a recommendation on the jail that you have before you. They also did take action. The preliminary site plan associated with New County Jail to approve it with conditions, and one of those conditions is contingent upon. An approval of the special use permit. That's fairly common for for this type of arrangement. So they, the project would require a final site plan approval as well, so it would go back to the Plank Commission. If you were to approve the special use permit. The other hearing was for a new gas station. The corner at Isabella in Pickard, the the south, it'd be the southwest corner. They, that is a special use permit in the in that zoning district. They held the hearing, but they actually postponed action on it. They identified a number of concerns. That they wanted to look at further. So they also postponed action, the the site plan associated with that one. Another item also on the on the Pico Road corridor, just east of Burger King, is a proposed Dollar General store. Which received a preliminary site plan approval, subject to a number of conditions. And and then the final item on the agenda was actually part of, it was an improvement project at the Summer Hill Village Mobile Home Park. This, somebody may know this as the Pleasant Ridge. I think it was called Mobile Home Park. It was taken over by new owners last year. Those new owners have been very busy updating that park and making some really fantastic improvements. And one of them is is a a new clubhouse and office building, and that was what was on the agenda. Unfortunately. The the applicant was not able to be at the meeting. I'm still not quite sure why. But because they had questions for the applicant, they postponed action on that item as well. So it was a busy meeting for the Plank Commission. They are. They did schedule a special meeting for the second Tuesday in in July to look at. A set of proposed zoning ordinance amendments. We're, we're, we've been operating under a new ordinance for almost a year now, and. We've identified some, I guess what I would call punch list items that we need to address. So there'd be, they scheduled a special meeting to have time to look at that, look over that list. Without the pressure of a number of of other business items. So they'll be doing that on that on that second Tuesday.
Very good. Any questions or comments for our director? Thank you very much, Mr. Mr. Nanny. And with that, that moves us to board member reports, and I'll start right at the top and kind of go through here. Clerk Cody, if you have anything to report on?
I am going to report after you are peeing off ears.
Okay.
Our meeting. Or I can start it with, at our meeting. We ended up talking about the nine one one surcharge and we added a link to. Tara added the link to the Union Township webpage under announcements for information on the nine one one surcharge. So just click that link and it gives you all the information on that.
Well, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and follow up on this part of my report as well regarding the intergovernmental liaison team that Lisa and I attended. On June fourteenth. I just want to recognize those that were in attendance, so that you're all aware. Commissioner Tobin Hope, Administrator, County Administrator Margaret McAvoy, Commissioner James Marino, Mayor Will Joseph. Vice Mayor Amy Perschbacher, the City Manager Nancy Ridley, Lisa and myself. Mark Stuldry, our manager, and then Eric Rodriguez, Public Relations Manager for the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe was there. And it was really a a great meeting, and Lisa already brought up the nine one one surcharge was part of our discussion. But the city and tribe also had discussions regarding plans for the Mount Pleasant Center and where that's going. We did get an update on the jail at that point on on what their plan, the county's plans were. We also talked about the non-motorized transportation plan, and I I think the big message there was really related to with a lot of this. Federal money coming towards our municipalities from the Restore Restore Act, did I get that right? As Commissioner Horton had mentioned, that we left up and continue to remember the non-motorized transportation plan. You know, if we do a road project and the non-motorized transportation plan indicates that we need to crosswalk there for safety reasons. Or walkability or bikeability, then let's pay attention to that, make sure that gets included in the project. Let's see, we also talked about Mid Michigan Aquatic Center Recreation Authority. They have officially met. And if if you remember, this board is one of the boards that authorized that. That's a partnership with the city and the public school system. And so they've had their first meeting, and it's really in their court now. So we've removed that responsibility from ourselves and given it to that authority. We did talk about the American Rescue Plan, and I think Commissioner Horton alluded to this little bit, that. I think the consensus was that we want to make sure that we're responsible and we plan well. And we get bang for our buck, and we want to communicate with each other to look for opportunities where we can do bigger together than we can alone. And so that was part of it. We also scheduled or agreed to schedule quarterly meetings during COVID. This this liaison group really didn't have much of an opportunity to meet properly, and so I'm I'm glad to see us agreeing to. Meet on a much more regular basis because it is a great opportunity for us. meet on a much more regular basis because it is a great opportunity for us to communicate with our neighbors and our community members that don't live in the township, what their plans are and how we might be able to help them and how they can help us. Is that reasonable, Lisa?
Yes.
With that, I'll go to Treasurer Rice for board member comment.
But you guys won't like mine. Taxes are in the works and gonna be in mailboxes on the first, or you know, for, in your mailboxes. So that's my big spiel.
I didn't, I didn't like that one.
I told you, you wouldn't like mine.
Right. All right. Um, we'll go to Trustee Brown.
Yes, July 14th, I attended the city commission meeting. And I'll make this very brief. They had an introduction of a new, new city employee, Leanne Walker. She'll be in, into the PEAK program. There's also a presentation by Don Saitzema and Director Loria on a domestic violence, sexual crime awareness program, pilot program that they, they've been doing. It looks like it's been a success. I believe it's called the RISE program. And it looks like they're going to move that pilot program into advanced stage. Also, a couple of votes that they took was for Ruth Scott as an successor and then Frank Welsh Municipal Service Recruitment for the, to help with the city manager's recruitment. Another one that was very interesting for us as the Union Township Board was a contract for the fire protection. And it looks like there was a reduction in that grant. I don't know. Supervisor Milky may know more about this, but they did agree seven oh vote to pass that on to us and help us. So there's the partnership that Supervisor Milky is talking about with the city. And I liked their comments about how they do want to work with the township board more closely and on, and on other projects. So that, that, that was very exciting. So that, that's kind of my report on the city commission meeting for June 14th. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to lift up briefly. I know all the board members here saw the email from our manager regarding the refund the city gave us basically on our fire, fire services contract that we pay them. And it was a refund from the federal government that they felt because we're part of the fire service, we pay for that, that our township should be reimbursed as well. They certainly didn't have to do that. And it was unanimous. And I, and I know I personally reached out to several of the city commissioners to thank them because that's just a, a great goodwill show by the city. And I'm proud to, to be in the community with them too and, and serve together. Any questions? Trustee Houck?
Yes, I've attended two meetings since our last meeting. The first one was June 10th. Isabella County Road Commission meeting. There were questions asked at our last meeting when the McGurk subdivision would be built for their paving that they had done on their road. That should be, maybe Kim's already gotten the bill. They said that would be built this week, the week of the 21st. There were questions on the, also there about little hubs and stuff and driveways. I think you brought that up, Brian. Those were probably as a result of concrete driveways. So the only way that they could make those smooth is to cut those driveways out and it would have increased the costs. So those are questions we had last, at our last meeting about that one. They also approved the project that we approved at our last meeting. And that was Deerfield Road. The overlay on Deerfield Road, I'm, I'm sorry, the overlay on Meridian Road in a partnership with Deerfield Township, the Isabella County Road Commission and ourselves. So they're getting furniture for their building this week. So they're pretty much moved in there. The second meeting I attended, James was also there, was Council of Governments meeting. It was hosted by Isabella Township. At their Township Park in Rosebush. We are going to be hosting at the McDonald Pavilion. We're going to be hosting the August 18th Council of Governments meeting. That's going to be the summer picnic. Food and drink will be provided. We also talked when they, when they were talking there, they were talking about the elections coming up. There's quite a big discussion about that. How we're getting these things coming up on the odd years. So every year it seems like there's an election or every year there's a ballot proposal. Instead of every, instead of the, just the even years, like things have been in the past. They were talking about how, how much that costs each township to do that. They also talked about consolidation of precincts. Well, maybe in our area, in Union Township, we can consolidate precincts as you've done, Lisa. But when you get to these smaller ballot issues where they try to combine different townships, where there'll be maybe three townships are required to go to a different township to vote. Want to try to get away from that because sometimes people are traveling many miles just to go vote on a, on one issue. So they also talked about 911, the 911 election, ballot proposal coming up. And Mark Griffiths, the director of 911, wants to come and talk to our group. So he wants to come and talk to us at one of our July meetings. So we just have to set that up with him. Then James may have something else to say about that when he speaks to. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Kim, Kim Smith, would you be willing to take a note for Mark as you relay your week for him to reach out to Griffiths regarding?
Yes.
Thank you. And, and Bill, I want to thank you for following up on those two questions too with road question.
There is one other thing too that they're going to do. They're going to do some new kind of overlay paving on some patched areas on roads. Areas that in the past, you know, they go, they fill a pothole in, you know, then six months later, they're filling the pothole in again. So in a lot of these real bad areas, and then for example, there's one just down the road from me on Baseline Road. It's been terrible for years. And now they're going to overlay over top of that. They're going to go like a 200 foot stretch. So it will be smooth instead of going through dips and everything. And they've got quite a few of those they're going to do throughout the county to try to make these roads last a little longer.
And, and be a lot safer really too, right?
Right. Well, this one down here is not safe. I mean, I've seen people hit it and go in the ditch.
Right.
And it's not that old of a road.
Trustee Bills, did you have a question?
Yeah, when he was talking about merging townships for a special election, I, I think that's going to cross the boundary of legality, isn't it?
Well, they, they already do it.
Yeah, we do.
It's just for a smaller, like, just say, uh, say for instance, if it was a school board election and there's kids from, just say Shepherd Public Schools, they're in maybe Co Township. There may be some in Union Township. There may be some in Lincoln Township. So what they're, what they're, what happens now is just say everybody might, Lisa knows more about this than I do.
Yeah, Clerk Cody?
I can't answer that. Okay, so we have two school districts in our township. We have the Mount Pleasant Public School and the Bill City Public Schools. Well, we only have 75 voters in Beale City. So it costs a good $12,000 for an election. That's on the lower side. So Deerfield just added the 75 voters in. You have to approve it through the state, you know, the county, everything has to approve it to consolidate it ahead of time in order to do it, but it can be done and save thousands of dollars to do it. So sometimes it's kind of a needed thing.
Right.
You know?
Any other questions for Trustee Houck? Thank you, Clerk Cody. Trustee Thering, I know Rodney stole your thunder, didn't he?
No, I appreciate that Rodney. Thank you. Please feel free every, every time to do that. You will do a much better job. I have nothing to add. Well, I have one thing to add on the planning commission. They would like to say a special thank you to Lisa for her service. That was said several times throughout our meeting. So I just wanted to add that. So thank you, Lisa, on behalf of the planning commission. And Rodney, please keep up the good work in your description of the planning commission meetings. And then as far as the council governance, no, I don't have anything to add, Bill. Thank you for setting up that August 18th. They're working with staff to do something on the 18th, so.
Rick Urban had a lot to do with that too. We're gonna, I forgot to tell you, James, you and I may be providing beverages for that.
Very good.
I accept that the township will take care of it.
I, I have some additional report as well. I just wanted to piggyback on Clerk Cody's and my joint meeting with the liaison group or intergovernmental group, excuse me. But I do also want to thank Lisa for her service in the planning commission. And with that, also thank James for being, being willing to serve in the planning commission as well because it is a heavy lift board. And we have a great planning commission and, and they work hard at what they do. And I appreciate all the deliberation and all the members of that board. So thanks to both you two and, and our planning commission. So the rest of my report, I just want to touch base on EDA met June 15th. We did go into closed session to consider purchase or lease of a real property. It's all I'm going to say at this moment on that until I know what, what's happened with that. But they did give the motion to purchase or lease a piece of property. And then this coming week, just a heads up, uh, our manager Mark Stuhl dryer and I will be meeting with the county administrator, Margaret McAvoy and County Commission Chair. We, we actually requested, the township requested the meetings that we could fill them in on some of the activities of the EDA. And, and it was added, the, added to the agenda, an update from the county regarding their plans with the jail. So that is going to be this, forgive me for not knowing the date off the top of my head. I think it's the 30th, so. But that'll be coming up. And then I'll certainly report back to our board as I hear, once we get through that. Are we good to go?
No, you was trying.
Trustee Bills?
Yeah, you didn't.
Can you guys hear me okay? Because I can hardly hear anybody, but you're good. Okay. I didn't make that first, you know, meeting on the county commission, but I'll be there in July. I'm really happy they're going to be in live. That's good.
You know, when you were, you were speaking after Trustee Houck and I was thinking I had done you and my apologies.
Hey man, I get it. I'm chopped liver. I get it. Okay. But I was just going to ask though, are we allowed to attend the, the Council of Governments meeting or no?
You're encouraged to.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. And, and we all, I believe, are on the email list for that. I think last month a few of our trustees maybe didn't get that and we forwarded that through, but we'll make sure that.
I got it.
Okay, wonderful. Yes, you are encouraged and absolutely. It's a great chance to network with other communities, find out what they're doing. Please, please, please. So, and thank you to Trustee Houck and Trustee Thering for attending that this last time. All right. With that, that'll move us to consent agenda. And I only want to point out, there are two participation agreements, the chip and seal that would became possible because of a 2% distribution from the tribe. I want to say thank you to them for that. And also the Meridian Road, a joint venture with Deerfield Township. And that was also largely made possible because of a 2% distribution from the tribe to both our township and Deerfield Township. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any motions with consent agenda. And may I ask who had warrants?
This was a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Houck, support by, I missed it. Was it Rice or?
Um, I, I think I was first, but it was myself or Thering. I'm, I'm not sure which were first, but.
Okay, I, I heard, I heard your voice.
Okay.
Treasurer Rice, so motion by Houck, support by Treasurer Rice to approve the consent agenda as presented. Did I see someone with the hand? James Thering, right?
Now's when you should ask who had.
Yeah, thank. Trustee Thering.
I, I had accounts payable, but we all received the email that they would not be prepared. So I'm guessing that whoever is responsible for July will have a little bit more on their plate.
I think that's the first time that's happened. You're lucky.
It is.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah.
I have it in July. Thank you.
Oh.
All right. There weren't very many guys. There really weren't.
We have a motion to prove, sorry, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Clerk Cody, would you take a roll call on the motion to approve consent agenda as presented?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Thank you. That brings us to new business item A. Discussion action for new Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office Special Use Permit Application. And with that, I'll be happy to turn it over to our acting manager, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith for introduction.
Thank you Supervisor Milky. This item begins on page 26 of your agenda packet. And it involves the consideration of a special use permit for the new Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office. The proposed parcel for this facility is 44.58 acres and is located on the south side of Remus Road, east of Isabella Road. There are 36, 36 pages of information in your packet pertaining to this agenda item. And Mr. Rodney Nanny, our community and economic director is here tonight to present as well as answer any questions that you may have. So Rodney, you're up again.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just highlight a couple of items. This, as was mentioned, this is a special use permit. And this is, the county jail is a type of, of public and institutional building in use. That's the term that's in the zoning ordinance. Which is allowed as a special use in the, in the R2A district. R2A is one and two family residential zoning district. So it is appropriate to consider it as a first special use permit. The the, according to section 14.3 of the zoning ordinance, which is special uses, it requires both a public hearing by the planning commission and a recommendation to you. And you as board of trustees have a final authority over special use permits. Just a couple of highlights related to the, the, the long-term use. So we mentioned the master plan earlier. The master plan does identify the land where the, the jail is proposed as for future, designated for future residential uses. That was a comment made tonight. However, as I said, these public facilities are allowed in, in areas planned for residential, subject to special use permit. The master plan itself does not actually provide any guidance related to where public facilities like this should go. The so the, the only note we, we made in our report to the planning commission was there are several other public and institutional buildings and uses across the street. They've been discussed tonight and in the area. Maury Courts and the Ice Arena and the Discovery Museum being among them. With, with that in mind, the overall, what, what the planning commission, after evaluating this proposal, they've reviewed it in accordance with section 14.3J of the zoning ordinance. This is a section that lists seven standards for a special use permit approval. Those standards are in your, in your packet. You, you have a copy of the report that was prepared for the planning commission. And each of the standards are in a packet that's on page 36 through 39 of your, of your packet. Overall, the planning commission found that, that the, the project can comply Overall, the planning commission found that, that the, the project can comply with those seven standards and they did pass a motion, which is part of our, our report request for board action that, that noted several conditions, three conditions in particular, that were related to the special use approval. This is, as I said, you, you have the final authority over, over special use permit. If you, if you do act to approve it, the plan was still, the project would still require final site plan approval from the planning commission.
Any questions for the economic development director? Trustee Bills?
Was there a traffic impact study done?
No, there was not, at least none that was submitted to the, to the planning commission.
I'm concerned about the traffic, but, I mean, because of the children in the area and whatnot, but I don't, I don't know that it's a hazard, I actually think it's kind of good because it's on Isabella Road. And that's a really good starting point if you have an emergency.
The, the level of, of activity, and I suspect that, that the applicant can address this as well, but the level of activity related to traffic is actually not even close to what would normally be the minimum to generate a traffic impact study.
And I would think, knowing how Maury Courts works, especially on some of those days where they have, you know, like AAU basketball, for example, just as an example, there, there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of there. And I'm, I'm thrilled that it's used so much by our community and, and actually outside communities, right? A lot of money comes into this community because of that center. I know, I know my family uses it, my daughters run basketball.
But that is the only access road to the jail then, right?
That is correct.
We have other questions or comments for our director?
So I have a question here, so. Do we combine both of these Rodney or what? I mean. Page twenty-six and page thirty-five, are we combining those or I guess I'm kind of confused with how to make a motion here.
Oh, the thirty-five is the packet, I believe, I'm sorry, jump it in here, Mr. Nanny. I believe that's the packet that was provided to the planning commission as reference for us.
That, that is correct, yeah.
Yes, I see that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, okay.
And, and just to note, although it's not required, I had questions about our zoning ordinance today, I'm more familiar with the old ordinance because I worked under that a lot, but is our new one's only been in effect for a year, but I asked, you know, when we're prepared to do that as a board, asked our director to walk us through the seven points or standards of the special use permit approval, I don't know if, if how much of the board here happened to see the planning commission meeting, I actually attended it. And I thought the, the planning commission did a really good job of deliberating, not just on this issue, but other issues that I paid attention to. But nonetheless, to, to me, if it's useful to this board, we can go through those points if you'd like to.
Yes.
Do we have to have?
Motion?
Do we have to have a motion first?
I, I, I'm okay with conversation if, if the board will entertain that. And I, and I guess the other point, because I know this is a sensitive issue for some, and I empathize and understand that. So I don't want to do anything but due diligence on this. But I, I did ask the applicant to, to remain if possible, so I think it's fair. If there are questions that our economic director is not able to ask and you'd like to ask of the applicant, I, I'm certainly comfortable with you doing that. Is that reasonable? And, and not that I have expectations that you will, but if you do, I think it's fair.
Well, we've always gone over these seven points before, remember?
Yes.
You know, when we've done other buildings, gas stations, whatever.
And that was actually under the old ordinance, and I think there were more than, I think there were like eleven. Ten?
Yeah.
It's been simplified a little bit.
Thanks Rodney, you've simplified it for us.
Well, if there aren't other questions for our board members, I have a couple that I'd like to ask, trustee Brown.
Yeah, I have one that was, it was just brought up. And I can't remember if it was Shelley that brought it up or another community member. But if, if Rodney can answer this, probably more Sheriff Maine. On the release of the inmates after their due time is up, something like that, do, do we assist them, do they just walk out of the jail and just walk down the road? I guess that's some of the view that I'm hearing in the community when they talk about jail members being released or just walking in and out, is there a procedure by Isabella County Sheriff's Department? When there is an inmate released, are they assisted to a, their, 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 their home or wherever they may be going? Or are they just released out the door and walk away? I guess if somebody could answer that for me.
So this is an item that came up with questions for the planning commission, Sheriff Maine had answers for that and I would defer to him on that.
Sheriff, Sheriff Maine, if you'd like to respond, you're, please stay on topic, but you're welcome to respond.
Absolutely, so for that, that topic point, you know, when, when someone's released from the jail, in my experience for the five years I've been there, and you certainly could talk to the previous sheriff and, and jail administrators, but I would say ninety-five percent or ninety-eight percent of the time, there's a vehicle waiting to pick them up. Most people don't want to be there any longer than they have to, so they leave. There are occasions where maybe somebody has to wait for a ride, for example, and, and they wait inside our lobby, we let them use our telephone to make those calls to find their arrangements and their rides. That will be available in the new facility as well. In some cases, they need some, some assistance and we provide an I-ride bus ticket or a fare for them to, to go someplace if they need to. The only, and, and it's funny that the topic comes up because it happened here a few months ago. We, we had a homeless person that had no place to go, literally no place to go, and the jail administrator worked for three hours with this man. We finally drove him to a homeless shelter in Saginaw, so. Am I, is somebody gonna walk out of there and walk down, back into town? I'm not gonna say it would never happen, I, I, I would say that. But the rarity of it that I've seen is almost zero in our facility downtown right now, so. I, I just don't see that happening ever in the facility and farther out, that'll happen even less.
Thank you Sheriff Maine, I appreciate that and I, I, I appreciate to know that the percentages are extremely low for that scenario, so I, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Nanny, I'm gonna direct questions at you, if it's, if you feel it's better for the applicant to respond, I'll, I'll allow you to make that decision. Okay, um, so. I, I did read the letter and Shelley Smith articulated that in her opportunity in public comment. But she, she asked a couple of questions that'd be reasonable to address. And I'm just reading my notes, forgive me. And my first question was exactly what you just asked trustee Brown, but following up on that, the next one was with regard to work release or court appearance. Or maybe an inmate has served their time, which I think is what we primarily just addressed, but in those events where an inmate has to be taken from custody and transported somewhere. I guess I'd like just to hear a little bit more about the policy of that. And how that, in, in particular, safety of course of neighbors.
Sheriff Maine also discussed work release with the planning commission, I recall that, I would defer to him again on that, that question.
Sheriff, if you're able, you're muted.
Sorry, I don't, I don't control the mute, I was waiting, sorry.
No, no problem.
So, so, you know, work release and, and transports, so, so right now, work release, we haven't had any work release, some of that was COVID related. But a lot of it, recently there was a bail reform act and a criminal justice reform. And what that meant was a lot, if not all of the low-level offending people are given a, a very low bond or in most cases now are giving an appearance ticket. So work release really isn't a thing right now and it may not be moving forward with these changes. The people that we would have wouldn't qualify for a work release, for example, so. Previously, maybe it was a suspended license or a drunk driving and they would, you know, to keep their job, we would allow work release, so work release, they would change their clothes into to regular civilian blue jeans or whatever they had. Their employer would pick them up and take them and then they would come back and then check themselves back in. As far as court transports, you know, that was one of the things that we really pushed in the beginning of the planning phases. You know, and there's like, like somebody mentioned earlier, you know, there's not a lot of bonus for COVID-related matters, but one of the things that happened with COVID was our judges became very familiar with virtual and Zoom. So a lot of the hearings, if not all of the hearings at this point, outside of jury trial or a, a sentencing. They're during a, a, a virtual platform and we've created more areas in the jail to do that virtual platform and we're gonna create some like mini courtroom settings, so it looks like a courtroom, so. Preliminary hearings, all kinds of stuff can occur without moving the inmate. When we do have to move the inmate from, from the jail to the court, they, they come out into the Sally Port, which is a security area, we actually just bought a brand-new transport van. It's secured, it'll, it drives to the court. On the court side, we, we'll have to have a small Sally Port holding cells, we pull into that, we close the door, so at no point in time are those inmates outside or no, tackled where they'd be walking to a, a vehicle or something, so they would never be outside. If I missed a part of the, the answer or the question, please let me know, I, I think I covered it, but if I missed something.
I, I think you covered my question, thank, thank you very much. I, I'm gonna try to finish my questions and other trustees, I'll give opportunity, but since I'm on a roll here. And, and I'm, what I'm wanting, just for the board's information, you know, we hear concerns. And we heard it tonight in public comment. And, and there were some reasonable questions, and so I'm trying to ask some of those that I noted. In the, in the event, I, I think trustee Bills mentioned this regarding traffic, and this is probably the most, I don't want to say alarming, but the one that I personally probably have paid most attention to. In the event that there is an emergency call and so a vehicle needs to be expedited off-site. You know, I, I think some of the concern I heard was, well, there might be children by the museum, they might be doing outdoor activity. I'm assuming that sheriff has thought about that and, and has a plan and I'd just like to hear his thoughts on that if he's available. For that?
Absolutely, you know, so, so traffic, you know, there, there will be some increased traffic, it will be, it's less than one might think. You know, one of our large volumes of people coming into the sheriff's office right now is gun permits and gun-related stuff. If you, anybody's been watching the county board of commissions, the clerk's office for the county is gonna take that over actually, so. A lot of our traffic will, will kind of cease here shortly coming into the sheriff's office. We do get other traffic obviously and we get law enforcement coming in, going out of there. As far as the emergency activation in the facility, currently it's about, I'd say a couple of times a month that I hear sirens going out, of course, we're in a pre-hearing residential area and downtown. I'm not gonna say there won't be sirens when they come up to the intersection, you know, to get to the intersection if there's an emergency. However, you know, we are very conscious of that, we certainly want to be great neighbors and support the businesses and the stuff that go on there. The last thing we want to do was harm any of that, that methodology that goes on there, so. We'll keep that in mind, but there will be times where probably a light and siren will, will put a lot of that facility onto High Street or onto Isabella off of High Street. Does that mean we're gonna run lights and sirens from the facility all the, you know, way down that road that we're only on, probably not? Most times they won't do it till they get to the intersection and turn them on. And there's some laws that require, you know, that activation, so. There will be some at times, but it is rare and most times, guys and girls are out on patrol, they're not at the office.
Right.
We do, we do a lot of reports in the cars and stuff, so there's a lot less deputies in the department versus, you know, being out on the road or, you know, being there, so.
And, and that was part of my thought process too, is I was trying to understand this better and I, I am certainly not a, a public safety expert. But I wondered, well, don't you usually have patrol out and, and very often they will be closer to wherever the emergency is than someone that's sitting at the office filing paperwork?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is that accurate?
Yeah, you know, we put on about two hundred and forty thousand miles a year, so the, there, there's not a lot of time at the office, there's not a lot of downtime at the office. They are out there, absolutely, you know, and one of the things, and it was a bonus, I, I guess, and we didn't have any, I, I didn't, we weren't even aware it was gonna occur, but there was some widening there at High and Isabella and that will certainly help that. You know, there was some talk on other properties that maybe we could have an emergency on-ramp on the expressway and that may be something down the road that we look at as well, so. Anything going, you know, north-south, we would have access to get right on the highway there and that'd be something that MDOT would have to work with us and so forth in the county road, but there's some options there, but we certainly intend to be good neighbors and respect, you know, concerns that we've heard and, and understand.
Thank you very much, it, it is a, just a note, a continued priority, I believe, of this board to continue to make Isabella safer, trustee Houck.
Yes, along those lines, Sheriff Maine, at the last county road commission meeting, I don't know how it got brought up, they are talking about fire trucks and ambulances, police cars, but there's, there's some beacon or something now, it's in trucks and cars that can change traffic lights once, you know, they get close to them, I can't remember, there's some new technology they were talking about that's coming up. Because I just remembered, they were talking about that, I don't remember really the whole conversation, but do you know what I mean with that?
Yep, and it's not, there, there might be some new tech there, but it's not necessarily new tech, a lot of big cities and stuff use those on their, their fire trucks and stuff, so as they go down, for example, like Mission Street have them where it would admit a signal out to those lights and it would change those lights green for them, you know, rapidly. Move through the cycle rapidly so they could get out and get going, so it's certainly something we can look into. Again, I just think the volume's gonna be so low and, and you know, maybe at night, you know, nobody's gonna be there, you know, in those other areas anyways, but so that daytime stuff, they're on the road, they're out moving, so.
Very good, um, I, I think I have two more questions. With regards, I mean, you have a, a jail currently that's situated in the middle of downtown Mount Pleasant. It's not far from a school, it is right next to neighborhood, in fact, dear friend of mine lives about two houses away from that. But could you address or answer the question of, you know, how, how many inmates have actually escaped from your jail in the last decade?
So, in the last decade, I would say zero, you know, I, the only two that I know of way prior to my time, and the only two that I remember was a construction project and an expansion at the jail at one point in time and during the construction, an inmate was able to, to leave through a part of the construction process, was apprehended shortly after that. The one prior to that goes back and I can dig out some probably old news articles, but it was way, way a long time ago. Way before the, the tunnel was built between the courthouse and the jail. They used to walk inmates from the jail, you know, to the courthouse and, you know, a plan had been placed where the inmate just knocked over the deputy and then into a car that was waiting and took off. That's when they built the tunnel, so there's very few escapes in the state of Michigan, you know, unfortunately. Them are the only two that I can think of in the thirty years of public safety that I've been in this county working.
Thank you very much, and I think this is my last question and less trustees prompting me to think of something else, but with, with regards to impact to, to safety and/or deterrent, do, do you have any feeling or do you have data, maybe in other communities or ours if you have it, that speak to having a sheriff's department and, and what that may do to local safety and/or deterrence of crime? And I, I believe it was Commissioner Horton that spoke to the, the pharmacy that he has that. Do you have data that, that backs that up or is that a unrealistic question I'm asking?
Well, it's hard to, hard to put a percentage or a data point on deterrence, you know, that's, you know, when you drive down the road, you know, you deter a speeder or someone that might have run a red light. Certainly believe wholeheartedly that increased law enforcement presence in any area only makes places safer, makes the. Only makes places safer, uh, makes the community safer, makes, uh, you know, everything around us safe. Isabella Road is a heavily traveled road. We have speed on that road. Quite frankly, a lot of times they've got a speed on that road. You know, so additional traffic and now law enforcement on that road certainly will. Probably curb some of that speed and, and maybe trying to cut the red lights and different things like that. So, um, I really think there'll be. More of a bonus and safety in that area than, than, than some people, um, uh, might think, you know. And I, and I think we've done that in the, in the downtown district and we've been there. So, you know, we, we, uh. Again, it's hard to put a data point on a deterrence.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And, and, you know, I, uh, this is on a personal note as I've looked at all this. I mean, I, I absolutely empathize with the concern with the children's museum and, and why there's that perspective. But I also try to make sure that I look at the different perspectives and that's why I asked that question is. There, there is pros and cons to, to everything and I wanted to be able to weigh those out. Um. So trustees, do we have, uh, any further questions or comments for Mr. Nanny or the sheriff? Uh, yes, trustee Bills.
I just wanted to also say that I don't think the property values would be decreased. I think they might be increased because they're going to improve the landscaping on that area a lot more. And, uh, there's no reduction in property values downtown.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah, one other question, um, back to the inmates, um, and I don't know if Mr. Nanny can answer this or Sheriff Maine will have to. Uh, since the state police post is just down the road, do they house any inmates at any time? Or, uh, do, do all the inmates come to the county jail from our state police troopers?
That's a question I think Sheriff Maine would have to answer.
So, so most of the agencies have, um, what they would call, uh, like a holding area, but that is extremely temporary. Like, I mean, hours. So if they were going to interview somebody, they might put them in a temporary holding, um, place for an hour or so. But all, all arrests, uh, that, that were nudging do come to the sheriff's office from all agencies in the county.
Okay. I guess my point to that though is they do house inmates, even if it's for fifteen minutes for questioning. They do have inmates in their facility, of course, um, was my point. And we're roughly, what, a half a mile away from the trooper post from this new proposed county location?
Pretty close, yes.
In a residential, somewhat of a residential area. All right. Uh, I, I appreciate that. Thank you, Sheriff Maine.
Trustees, uh, trustee Howke?
If everybody's done, I'd like to make a motion to concur. Do I have to read this whole thing?
Think it would be good.
I'd like to make a motion to concur with the planning commission's recommendation and approve the specially proposed special use permit. Twenty, twenty-one, zero, one. Special use for the new Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office on approximately forty-four point five acres of land. Parcel numbers. One, four, zero, zero, two, four, one, zero, 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 one. Dash zero, two, and zero, zero, three, dash, zero, zero. On the south side of Remus Road, east of the, east of Isabella Road. In the northwest corner of section twenty-four in the R two zoning district. Subject to the following conditions. A site plan approval, a site plan. Is approved for the Isabella County Jail and Sheriff's Office. Proposed public services department. Approval of municipal water and municipal sanitary sewer service. Extensions to the site and the completion of the road paving as proposed on the plan. An additional width, surface, and turnaround area improvements along the remaining length of East Remus Road. To US one twenty-seven.
Uh, let's see, a, a motion by Howke, uh, support by Bills. Further discussion, I did hear, um, a request to kind of go through the seven points, which we can do. But if you have other questions or comments at this point, entertain those.
I think the seven points we've all read, right? Or go ahead, please, sir.
Yeah, I, I just, um, I, I asked our board if they would like to, and there was some affirmatives to that. So if. Mr. Nanny, would you take us through just the seven so that, um, our board is fully aware of? I'm sorry. Yes, Clerk Cody.
I, I did have a lot of questions, but I asked them when I was on the planning commission and they were all answered. And it was a lot of the similar questions that you guys had, but I already had them answered. That's why I didn't ask them again. But I just wanted you to know that. I did ask the same questions or heard the same answers. It's not that I didn't have any concerns or anything. I just, it was asked in like three different meetings, I believe, or four different meetings. Same concerns, questions.
Brian hit mine.
Uh, so, um, unless there's objection, cause I, I did hear support from our board. Mr. Nanny, would you just kind of walk through the seven? Just, um, seven points of standards, uh, kind of like you did with the planning commission. Cause I think it's helpful for our board to hear, um, what the planning commission heard as far as, uh, looking at our zoning ordinance. And how they applied that in making their decision.
So, uh, the, the standards are, are actually, you, you have in your packet, the, the report that went to the planning commission. And, uh, so the standards are in pages thirty-six through thirty-nine of the packet. They're in the black. Blocks of text, uh, uh, each sta- each standard is listed there. In the planning commission report, we divided. A couple of standards out into pieces so that we could address specific comments to parts of those standards. But, uh, I, I'll just read these directly from, uh, the zoning ordinance. Uh, second, the first standard is the proposed land use is identified in section three as a special use in the zoning district.
And, uh, of that it is because it's, it is identified as a special use as institutional use, right, in R two A?
That is correct. Yes. The, uh, the second standard is, uh, number two is the location, design, activities, processes, materials. Equipment and operational conditions of the special use will not be hazardous, hazardous, detrimental or injurious to the environment. Or to the public health, safety or general welfare by reasons of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes. Odors, dust, glare, light, drainage, uh, uh, drainage, uh, pollution or other adverse impacts.
Wow, that's a list.
It is.
Uh, any comments from our board or questions? A- and obviously, um, just for those that haven't done this before in a special use, our, our job is to affirm that, um. This special use meets or does not meet these, these standards. Yes. Did you have something, trustee, uh, Howke?
Well, I just was going to say, Mr. Vin could answer some of these questions if we had. I think he explained quite a bit of those when he had his three minutes to speak. Sheriff Maine's addressed some of these, so. I agree with.
If you have any concerns that, that you'd want to raise up, we certainly can, uh, dive into something. But if you agree with the planning commission on this, we'll move on. I'm, I'm okay with whatever the board would like to do here. Not seeing any desire to, to dive into this one further, so. Waiting for objection. Mr. Nanny, let's go to three.
Right. Number three, the spe- the, the special use will be designed, constructed, operated and maintained in a manner. Compatible with adjacent uses, the surrounding area and the intent of the zoning district. Where determined necessary by the planning commission or township board, the applicant has provided adequately for any restrictions on hours or days of operation. Minimization of noise and screening improvements or other land use buffers to ensure land use compatibility and minimize adverse impacts.
Some of that's for, a little hard for me to answer because I didn't study the actual site plan and it's preliminary at this, this point. But the planning commission, I'm assuming will do their due diligence regarding screening and in particular, right? They have to meet our zoning and screening period.
Mr. Vin explained some of that stuff too.
Yes.
Yes, he did. Thank you. Any concerns here from the board or feelings of support of the planning commission's decision? See, see no objection. Uh, let's keep moving. Mr. Nanny?
Number four, the special use location and character is consistent with the general principles, goals, objectives. And policies of the adopted master plan.
So I, I, I do have a question, um. And, and only because I was involved in the, the master plan. Wh- when I looked at it. Wasn't the frontage of that area along Remus on the south side of the road? Part of that was earmarked as institutional, just not as deep as, um, the current site plan that I saw is proposed. Is that correct?
Don't recall it being institutional.
It's how I looked at the, when I looked at the master plan earlier, that's what I was picking up from it. And, and I understand that, that the rest of that. Property, uh, the parcels that are there are identified as residential, um, which is what we are in as R two A. We're not rezoning here because it is an allowed use through special use permit. But I, I just want to make sure I was under interpreting the master plan correctly when I was looking at that map.
I, I see what you mean. Uh, the, uh, uh, the, what's referred to in the master plan as recreational institutional. Which is basically on the north side of, of Remus Road where Maury Courts and all that are. Though the color does come across the road. I, I suspect that that's a mapping issue of more than. An intention, but, uh, I, I won't disparage the consultants that wrote this report.
Well, I, I remember, I remember when I was in the planning commission, we discussed that particular piece of property. And we talked about, um, wanting some to the south to be, uh, some of that institutional recreational use. Because we're, uh, the hope was that that area would continue to expand like we saw with, um, you know, the, the rank, ice rank. Becoming more than just a nice rank. It became also more records. Um, and I do remember the discussions and. I just wasn't remembering very well the final decision and, and didn't know if I was interpreting the map correctly.
Well, I could, I can tell you this, that there is no text in the master plan that, that references that. But I, if, uh, if the planning commission did discuss that, I can certainly see how a consultant, the consultant might have keyed the, the, uh, color across the line. But there, there's no text to back that up.
Yeah. A- a- and not that it matters a lot, but I, I did spend time looking at the master plan. And as you mentioned earlier, being that it's, uh, R two A, um, it, it does conform with. Uh, what's being proposed here because of the special use condition that we allow in our zoning ordinance. I'm stating that correctly, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Anybody else have, uh? Comments, issues, concerns, support for this item? Not seen any. Let's keep moving through our seven.
So number five, the proposed special use conforms to all applicable requirements or standards of this, uh, this ordinance, the zoning ordinance. Or other township ordinances.
I'm, I'm just reading, rereading your tech. Sorry, does someone have a comment?
Well, just, I agree with the planning commission can conform.
Yeah, and, and the, the can conform really, I'm just rereading this now again, really has to do with, um, making sure I understand this. Making sure they follow some of the, uh, the zoning ordinances, stormwater management, et cetera, et cetera. The, the normal stuff we always require, correct?
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Thering?
Yes, the, um. The text underneath the question was produced by staff. Is that correct, Rodney? And then we as a planning commission. Agreed or had discussions until we agreed.
Yes, the, the, the report, uh, what you're looking at on page thirty-seven, uh, the, the comments underneath each item are, are staff comments. Yes.
They're not the planning commission comments, although the planning commission did read, review, ask questions. And, and came to the same conclusion.
Thank you for that clarification, trustee Thering. Any further comments or questions on this? I'm losing track here. We're on six now, right?
Number six, approval of the special use location will not result in a small residential or non-residential area. Being substantially surrounded by incompatible uses.
Looking for comments, questions? Agreed to? All right, uh, not hearing objection. Um, let's move on to seven and you, I see it's in parts for the. Planning commission, but you can address this how you feel is best, Mr. Nanny.
I'll, uh, just read it out of the ordinance again, uh, and, uh, we sort of discussed it however you'd like. Uh, the, the, number seven, uh, the impact of the special use will not exceed the existing or planned capacity. Of public or municipal services or infrastructure, including but not limited to roads, police and fire protection services. Refuge disposal, municipal water or sewage systems, other utilities, drainage facilities. And public or private wells. The public, uh, the proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost for services or infrastructure. That will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community.
So as I understand it, one of the requirements was the additional paving of that roadway in the turnaround. And I'm assuming that has to do with this one in particular. To allow that, the fire safety in particular, right? So they can do a turnaround at the end of the road.
That, that, that is correct. It, it was also a discussion related to traffic that, that, uh, the, the earlier standard about traffic, uh, impacts.
Thank you.
So.
Trustee Howke?
Yeah, so seven B talks about. Like the sewage system, just say, you know, waters or, um, Kim Smith can. I mean, our system can handle that, right?
Yes, in that location, that's not an issue for water and sewer capacity.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Anything else on that, Mr. Nanny?
That, that's the end of the standards.
All right. So we just went through the, uh, seven standards that the planning commission is required to go through. Our job is to re- essentially review and, and either approve or deny, uh, the recommendation by the planning commission. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm asking for objection if I stated incorrectly. What I heard from our board. Was in those seven items of standards. That either the SUP conforms or can conform and is there also in those cases is being required. By the, uh, requirements listed in the motion. Is that accurate, board? Okay. Thank you. For me, I needed to go through that. All right. Thank you, Mr. Nanny. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor, um. A- as written in front of you essentially to concur with the planning commission's recommendation. I'm happy to entertain, as I said earlier, want to make sure we're doing our due diligence here. So I'm happy to entertain any additional questions or comments. If I see any from our board, I'm looking at y'all. It's a lot easier. All right, uh, see, see no objection to, uh, Bill's, uh, request to call the vote. Clerk Cody, um, I'm not going to read this whole motion. See Howke did, but the general idea was to concur with the planning commission's recommendation and approve the, uh, special use permit twenty-one oh one. Uh, and with that, Clerk Cody, please do roll call.
Trustee Howke?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Treasurer Race?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes, and Supervisor Moki?
Yes.
All yeses, impacts is.
Thank you, Mr. Nanny, for all your work tonight.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Rodney.
I think you might get a break for a little while now. All right. With that, that brings us to new business item B. Regarding university. Regarding University Meadows, or otherwise known as Chip, Chip's Housing regarding a late fee waiver request. And with that, I'm happy to turn this over to our acting manager, Kim Smith.
Thank you. This item begins on page sixty two of your agenda packet. And for your consideration tonight is a request submitted by Peak Camp Campus Management to waive the water and sewer penalty for Chip's Housing LLC in the amount of four thousand, four hundred, forty six dollars and seventy five cents.
All right. Thank you. I trust our board has taken the time to read through this. Happy to entertain motion or if you need to comment on something. I'll jump in. I have to admit, I, I struggled as I read through this one a bit. Because my, my heart says, says one thing. You know, and, and they're appealing to result of different policies, state laws, et cetera, et cetera, that came into effect regarding COVID. And and that tugs at me a bit. But I, but I know our policy in general is to make sure that we have maintained fair treatment among all of our customers as far as water and sewer goes and, and everything for that matter. I also struggle with the idea of providing a waiver. So I, I have to admit here that you know, my, my brain and my heart speak differently right now.
I agree. But if we do for one, then we have to do it for everyone. And one thing I like the trustee Thering brought up a while ago is you know, it's fifteen percent. Can that amount be, we, that's something we should discuss in the future. Can that amount be lowered, you know, three percent, five percent?
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
So, um, acting manager Smith, may, maybe know the answer to this, because I don't. Is that, is that a one time fee? So, so let's assume I, I owe a hundred dollars and I don't pay it and it's late. So the policy is to add additional fifteen percent of that. So what if I don't pay it by the next quarter? Is that an additional fifteen percent? So is that being accrued quarterly then?
It would, it would accrue again because you would, that would be the outstanding balance. So it's fifteen percent on whatever the outstanding balance is.
And, and, and trustee Howke, I, you know, maybe there's good reason as to why we set that policy or the previous board. I mean, it's, it's been around for a while, I believe. But yeah, I mean, I'd certainly entertain looking at does it, does it make sense? And, and maybe it does. But, but maybe something else makes sense too. And, but I'm not one to we're not rewriting policy here tonight. Trustee Bills?
You know, this came up a while ago with another bill and we wanted to talk about it. It's never been put on the agenda. It's
Actually, it, it actually has been. We just didn't get to it that night. It was, it was put on the May fifth. I'm sorry. Is it okay if I?
Yes, I'm sorry, trustee Thering.
I'm, I'm sorry, Connie and Brian. It actually was put on the May fifth agenda when we were discussing ends, but ends took every second of our, our discussion. There was, I believe, the solar panel that trustee Howke had brought up and this particular subject. And I think I think if we I just, I don't know how that we can, we're not here to make policy tonight. And so if we would not follow through with how policy is written. You know, we had Mr. Shepherd there back in, I believe it was November or December, who had a similar issue that we denied the waiver. So that's what prompted the discussion. Uh, in my opinion, to have some discussion about the policy in regards to not necessarily doing anything with the fifteen percent, but capping it. And that's.
Yes, trustee Bills?
Is this a low income housing or is it student housing?
Student, I believe.
Student housing.
Well, the students weren't charged fees at the university and they weren't, you know, so I mean, I don't know. They got a break too. I'd say to deny it. That's what I would say.
Is that a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I don't have the writing in front of me, but yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny the request to waive the quarterly water and sewer bill pen, penalty for the Chip's Housing LLC located at forty one ten Sterling Way account number zero, three, six, two, five, in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and forty, forty six dollars and seventy five cents.
Support.
And we have a motion from clerk Cody, support by trustee Bills to deny the way request to waive the quarterly water and sewer bill penalty. Further discussion?
We need to talk about this issue. That's the only discussion I have.
I think maybe, I'm sure Kim could answer this. I understand maybe why it's fifteen percent on some of them. You know, if it's a hundred dollar bill, you know, some people are going to say, well, so what's an extra fifteen bucks? But when you're talking, you know, thirty thousand dollars, that's quite a difference.
Right. That's what, that's what trustee Thering said, you know, let's put a cap on it.
You just.
Yep. All right. But let's stick to the motion and we will get this back on our agenda. No, it, it's okay. I think it's worthy discussion, but that's not the motion on the floor. And, and I think our trustees are right that we need to have this discussion. Too bad we didn't get to it before, but any, any further discussion on the motion? See none clerk Cody, would you do a roll call to deny the request to waive the quarterly water and sewer bill penalty for Chip's Housing? Account number zero, three, six, two, five, in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and forty six dollars, seventy five cents.
Trusty Thering?
Yes.
Treasure Rice?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Trusty help?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Trusty Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
All yeses.
All right. Thank you clerk Cody. Uh, that brings us to item ten C, policy governance, two point five point ten cash flow ratio. Uh, happy to hand this over to our acting manager to introduce.
Thank you. So this item begins on page sixty five of your packet and is a pop, policy governance review for section two point five point one zero cash flow adequacy. Um, this speaks to the, or the policy wording is the township shall not fail to maintain an adequate level of cash flow. And then it further, the memo from the finance director, Sherry Teal, further outlines the manager's interpretation of that, which includes the levels that have been set for each one of those, of the different funds that the township has, the general fund, fire fund, east and west DDA funds, as well as the water and sewer funds, and what the level of cash flow should be. Then the memo then goes on to provide you information on the, the justification for the reasonability of this interpretation. And it, it talks about the amount that should be in the general fund to properly operate as well as the fire fund and when those funds are paid out to the city who supplies our fire suppression activities. And then as well as the West DDA and the water and sewer funds in order to maintain a proper cash flow so that they can conduct, we can conduct business and, and have, be able to pay the bills that need to be paid from those funds. Then there's some data that was provided as far as the current, the funds, the current cash in those funds and the amount required for compliance. And then it, it also lists that we are in compliance with all of those. So the manager's interpretation is that we are in compliance with this policy. We have adequate cash flow and adequate level of cash flow.
Uh, no action needs to be taken on this, but I'll ask our board if they have any comments or questions.
I do not, but I mean, I'll be right back. Apologize.
Sorry, I'll stall. Kim Smith, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Yeah, we, I'll just comment that we're, we're well above the amounts that are required for compliance. At this point, we're not threatening those, those limits at all. So with that, that'll take us, and I'm, I'll speak slowly here for clerk Cody. Uh, that takes us to item ten D, policy governance, pop, excuse me, policy governance, two point seven, ends focus of grants and contracts. And with that, I'll ask our acting manager to introduce this.
Okay. Thank you. So this item begins on page sixty seven of your board packet. And it's a review of policy governance item two point seven, focus on grants and contracts. So this policy states the township manager may not enter into any grants and contract arrangements that fail to emphasize the production of the ends. And secondary, the avoidance of unacceptable means. The ends and the means are part of your policy governance document and have been approved by the board. Specifically, the manager shall not submit a Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe two percent grant application without prior approval by the township board of trustees. So then the interpretation for this policy means that when submitting grant applications or entering into contracts, these should be focused on contributing to accomplishment, accomplishing your ends and your goal in your means. And that they should be consistent with board approve, your board approve global and policies. As it relates to the two percent funding in grant applications, this policy is interpreted to indicate the board is to approve the two percent grants applications prior to submission. Then the memo from Mark Stuldryer goes on to interpret, interpret the reasonable, reasonability of this based on the wording reflected in the policy. So some of the key points for this is that we have some of the data that he presented to show that we are in compliance with this policy is, for instance, the participation agreements with the Isabella County Road Commission. Those come to the board and they're approved by the board and they do, they do further our ends and the, the means that we have in our policy. Also, the assessing services, we have a contract assessing services at this time. And those, that, that accomplishes the ends of providing those services for the residents of the township. The other is, we've recently, or at the first of the year, we made an application for a grant in the amount of one hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred dollars for contribution to the lead and copper program in in providing a distribution inventory list. And we have, and I'll just give you an update on that because that does come out of my department. The list for that funding has come out. The state did do a lottery. Our application was approved. But at this time we are lower on the list and hoping that we will be funded for that. Two to three years, as long as the funding stays in place. So they did that similar to what, I don't know if some of you were here when we did the Saw Grant. They did a lottery, you get on a list and then that's funded becomes available, then your project is funded. So that's where that program is at. And also, we've also contracted to several firms in twenty twenty to do different projects that met your ends for providing safe and safe drinking water, safe sewer services for our citizens and to have good infrastructure. One of those is the rehabilitation of the manholes that we do. That's a program that we've been doing for several years and we last year we entered into that agreement with Plumbers Environmental, the board approved that contract. We also entered into a new contract with Hydro Corp to expand our cross connection program, which is a water program. In addition to the cross connection side of that, we are also working on that lead and copper distribution inventory. As they are doing those inspections, they are documenting that information for us so that we can then report that back to the, to Eagle as required. So there was an evaluation form provided. Those are just a few examples of things. We also, as far as the two percent, we do, we do discuss that at board meetings and we do get a consensus and approval from the board before those are submitted. And we were successful last year in receiving two percent funding from those submissions that were approved by the board. So there was, as I said, there was an evaluation form in your packet to assist you with your evaluation if we're in compliance with that.
Thank you. Um, so page sixty nine of our packet board. As always, the important thing is if there's a no to a question here that, then we need to have a little discussion. So I will run through this monitoring report and if, if there's objections, in other words, a no, I want to hear that loud. So was the report submitted when due?
Yes.
Yeah. Did the report lay out the manager's interpretation or an operational definition of the policy?
Yes.
Agreed, yes. Is the interpretation justified or is proof provided to explain why the interpretation is reasonable?
Yes.
Also agree. Uh, were you convinced that the interpretation, interpretation is justified and reasonable?
Yes.
Pretty clear to me too. Uh, did the interpretation address all aspects of the policy? Yes. I, I mean, all that's here, that's in our ends, not our ends, but in our policy. No objections. The data shown here as our acting manager iterated. Uh, does it show compliance with the manager's interpretation of our policy? I guess I'll just ask in general, are there any policy language changes you'd like to see regarding two point seven? Or any areas of two point seven that concern you that we should be addressing that we're not?
We thoroughly discuss things all the time with them.
I would agree. Hearing no objection. We'll move on then. All right. With that, that takes us to item ten E on our agenda. Policy governance, three point five, board commit, commission and community linkage. Acting manager Kim Smith, it's yours to introduce.
Okay. This item begins on page seventy of your packet and is an annual review of governance policy, three point five, board commissions and community linkage. The purpose of the policy is to assist the board in the execution of their duties as a long-term policymaking body. And to focus on long-term, excuse me, long-term organizational outputs and fiduciary responsibility. An evaluation form has been provided on page seventy two to assist you with your evaluation of this policy.
All right. I guess I'll begin. Uh, do you feel that our board is in strict compliance with the policy as stated?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
I actually had a question. Um, this, this is something that we all get together with these groups and have discussion, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it's September when this discussion happened, correct?
Uh, it has been in August in the past and it's fluctuated a little bit, but I believe, I believe the last two years it has not happened. Is that accurate from? So, I mean, from my, it usually is in August, September, but I, I felt we were not in compliance because of past.
Well, I mean, with COVID, we understand that. And the, the, the basis of the discussion is to share ends and promote alignment with the community, which is the linkage that we've part of our discussion on our end. Okay. I, I think what I need to do is the we just need to go through the questions and then I can make my statement.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Um, so I already commented on whether or not we're in strict compliance or not. Further comments from trustees?
And I'd say no, but within, we have reasons.
Right. And I actually think in nineteen it didn't happen and and Bill, Lisa, Kim, you can address this, but I think it didn't happen in 19 either, despite that being prior to pandemic.
Thought it did. Maybe it didn't. I don't remember. I do know that I, you know, I had put down that, no, we weren't in compliance, but that was due to, you know, circumstances outside of our control.
Yeah, absolutely. There's no question in 2020 that was the case. So hopefully in 2021.
Yeah.
2019.
We did?
I don't know.
It was a few years. I thought we did.
Okay, in my memory, maybe wrong, so.
Yeah.
I know I attended one when I was on the planning committee, but I don't know when it was. It was either 18 or 19.
We met at the commission on aging building in 19.
Oh, I was thinking that was 18. I do remember meeting that, but okay, thank you. All right, well, in any event, we didn't do well in 2020, but we're not going to blame that on anybody at this point. But let's get it back together in 2021, right?
That's right.
If we're not in strict compliance, please indicate what you notice that gives evidence to the board and not in compliance. I think we just had that discussion. How do you think the board could improve the process to be in full compliance?
We need to plan ahead, and I have a pandemic.
There you go.
Get right on that.
Um, what does the board need to learn and discuss in order to live by its policies more completely? I think Connie, or trustee Bills, excuse me, just articulated that well.
Yeah.
Yes, trustee Thering.
Um, considering it can have an impact on ends, wouldn't wouldn't it be better for us to have this meeting like early second quarter? So these boards have linkage to citizens, which is huge. From a different perspective than the Board of Trustees, and couldn't we use potentially some of this information to help develop our ends? Because it's that community linkage that unfortunately, we have a lack of right now.
I agree.
I do, too. I like your idea on that. I was just going to say that in some ways, it's probably situated where it is because of the budget process that we're beginning to get a feel for what the budget's going to look like. But you're right, the beginning of that process is probably the best, which is as we're looking at for our ends for the following year.
It doesn't mean that in August, we couldn't get a letter of recommendation from each board. We don't necessarily have to meet in August with them, but I mean, do the meeting before we develop our ends. Maybe if they want, each board wants to develop a statement in August or September just to see how things have progressed before budget really starts to happen. So just a thought. And I don't know how we take it from here, but.
Well, if there's consensus on this, I've heard from two other trustees and myself. We certainly can change the schedule as we see fit regarding the monitoring of this and bump it up. But I mean, we'd have to take action to do that.
Different entities have different budget cycles, too.
Yes. Sorry, trustee, I thought you were done. Clerk Cody.
Can we ask Mark about this on a schedule that would work with us? Because he has everything down back, and I think he'd be better to answer, when would be the best time to do this?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So acting manager, would you put this in your long list of notes to our manager that we'd like to have that discussion? So thank you.
Thank you.
That'll allow him to prepare to answer some of the questions you heard. Are we good otherwise then, board?
Yeah, I think it was a good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. All right, with that, we'll move on. Item 10F, unless I missed something. Nope, 10F. Policy Governance 3.6, Supervisor's Role in the Board's Process. Oh, this is where it gets ugly. I could step away if you want me to.
Stick your fingers in your ear.
Yeah, with that, I'm, okay, I'm happy to hand over introduction by our acting manager.
So this begins on page 73 of your packet. And this is an opportunity for the board to review a policy which pertains exclusively to the board, the Board of Trustees, specifically the supervisor's role in the board process. And there is an evaluation form that has been provided on page 76 to assist you with your evaluation of this policy. With that, I'll turn it back over to you guys.
All right, I guess with that, we'll go through our evaluation process. So do you believe our board is in strict compliance with the policy as stated?
Yes.
I believe the supervisor is in strict compliance with this.
Me, too. We have a great supervisor.
You're kind. Thank you.
I think the wording on this might need to be changed a wee bit.
Yeah, you mean on the evaluation form?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll try to do that as we go through the rest here. I'm going to comment on one. I'm trying to look for my notes on this. Yeah. Item 3.6.1.1, which on page 75 of our packet, it's the second bullet item. I'm sorry, it's the first bullet item under 3.6.1. It says, "Meeting Discussion Content Will Only Be Those Issues Which, According to Board Policy, Clearly Belong to the Board to Decide, Not the Township Manager." And, you know, I just want to, I guess, state what the statute says about this and make sure that we all know what avenues we have when we want stuff on the agenda. Because, you know, staff does build that agenda with input from us, right? And we certainly can choose not to take anything up that they choose to put before us if we want. But I know there may have been some frustration on certain things, like, how come we're not getting to this item? And how do we get it on the agenda? And per statute, it, we'll talk about non-statute ways, too, but per statute, the supervisor can put something on the agenda or any true trustees, any two board members. So if two board members request something to be put on the agenda, it better be put on the agenda. Right? And so I want to make sure we all know that as members of this board, that those are the legal avenues. Am I misquoting something here, clerk Cody?
Three? I believe it's three.
Okay, I may have misquoted it. Three. My memory is bad. I haven't looked at that statute in a while. And we'll double check on that. So for now, I'll go with three, but I think there's usually a consensus when we want to talk about something that we can get three members to say yes. If this board ever has three members request and you don't feel like you're being heard, tell me. And I've kind of heard that, but it needs to be a formal request, right? And make sure that it is such. And an informal way to get something on the agenda is kind of like we have done tonight, where we've asked our acting manager to please forward a note regarding like the schedule that we talked about, right, for the joint meeting that we'd like to have that in discussion. And I can tell you, if I'm, I hate to speak for Mark here because I can't, but if I'm him and I hear one trustee say, "I want to talk about this," but you don't hear general support from the board echoing that, probably not going to put it on the agenda, right? So if that's the case, and I just want to reiterate that if we get an email with three trustees saying we want to talk about something, it better be on. And right, makes sense?
Yes.
But those are the tools we all have to allow it to happen. But I'm certainly willing to facilitate if we feel like something's not going like we think it should, because we do control the agenda, and we also rely on our staff a lot to provide us with policy decisions and fires that we need to deal with. Is that helpful?
Yes.
All right, so I didn't feel that we weren't in compliance, but I did want to lift that up. So with that, I didn't hear anybody say we were not in compliance. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm a stick, skip number two. Number three, how do you think we could improve the process to, I won't say to be in full compliance, but how do you think we could improve this process or policy? If you have ideas. I'm sorry, yes, trustee Thering?
No, actually, I guess my statement is more specific to the agenda, but that's probably not this discussion. This is not what we're discussing.
I will add that through some of my interactions with other community leaders, I try to be really open with all of the rest of the board of those discussions that I have. So I hope I do a reasonable job of that.
You do a very good job at that, on my end.
But don't ever hesitate. If you feel like a not, then I'm happy to work on that. I can take criticism.
We call you at seven in the morning.
I don't turn my phone on usually till nine o'clock. I'm like, oh, I haven't turned my phone on yet. Anyways, what does the board need to learn and discuss in order to live by its policies more completely? Anything? All right, seeing nothing at this point.
Really?
Yes.
One of the things I did note that I thought you do very well is the fact that, you know, people always know when they're talking about you, if you're speaking for the board or if you're speaking as your own person. And I think that is very important and that, you know, as the supervisor, because, I mean, you're letting them know, you know, when they ask you your position, but you say, "But I am not talking as supervisor here." You know, you make sure that you separate those. And so I did, I did mention that, you know, I think that's very important.
Well, thank you, because I do try, and I'm very conscious of that. Making sure that when I speak to someone, whether or not it's a board policy versus myself
Right.
as a board member. And I'm clear that any one of us as a board member has no authority except as a body. So thank you for that, because I do, I'm very conscious of it, and I do try. All right, yes, trustee Bills.
Well, I'm looking at the Michigan Township Association Authorities and Responsibilities Book, and it says that when we go to approve the agenda, we can add or subtract anything in our motion to approve.
Correct. We can. It has been, and this is why I reached out to everyone on the board. We tend to try not to add stuff last minute, especially actionable stuff, because it doesn't allow everybody the proper opportunity to educate themselves and prepare. So we avoid it, but there are instances when it's, it makes sense to do that. So we can do that, absolutely. Is that a fair statement?
Okay, well, I'm curious as to how we're going to get three trustees to agree on anything if we don't talk about anything, and we have to individually make a request. Do I have to solicit that outside of the meeting?
Yes. I mean, that's not the only way to do it, but that is a good way to do it, is to say, "I want to speak about XYZ, and let's get this on the agenda." And then ask for, you know, you may have had conversations with some other trustees that would like to put it on the agenda. What, are we losing it here? Anyways, so yeah, I mean, that's the way to do it, is to get an email confirmation that others want to join in. But it can also happen here, right? Like we did with the other stuff regarding the policy for late fees. Yes, treasure rights.
Yeah, what I was just going to say, one, you know, sometimes in the final board comments, people have brought up things like, "I would like to see this talked about in the future" and not necessarily move on anything tonight, but, and if someone says, "Oh, that sounds interesting." I'm interested in hearing about that. That gives Mark feedback as to, hey, there's interest by more than just one individual.
He's typically, you want to hear from more than one or two trustees to get consensus that that's something we want to talk about together. But a formal request, trustee Bills, is a powerful way to do it, right? It's on the record, too, that way. Formal request, meaning like an email or something. Is that helping at all?
Kind of, I guess.
Well, you know, if you've got something that you want to bring up, and I know you've listed a couple of things to me recently, let's make sure they happen, as long as there's support for that. All right, I was going to move on if that's okay.
Thanks for asking that, Connie.
Yep, thank you, Connie.
Yeah, thank you. We are moving to item 10G, Policy Governance 3.7, Duties of the Elected Department Heads, specifically really our clerk and our treasurer. And I'll be happy to hand this over to our acting manager for introduction.
This item begins on page 77 of your packet. This is very similar to your previous item. This is a board, this pertains exclusively to the Board of Trustees and specifically the duties of the elected department heads. There is an evaluation form on page 80 of your packet to help you complete your evaluation.
Thank you very much. I guess I'll just start on page 80 of our packet. Do you believe the board is in strict compliance with the policy as stated? Yes, trustee Thering.
First question. Actually, I feel that I don't feel that I can answer that, because they are department heads. They do deal with things that, while I feel that they are in compliance with everything, I don't know. I don't know how to know that without them maybe sharing a little bit more of what they do. I mean, I have complete confidence in Kim and Lisa. It's not a question of that. But to truthfully say, I don't know what they do in a day, a week, a month, or a year. And I'm sure it's quite impressive if you really get down to it. They are under an advisory supervision of the manager, which I take that as support when they need their support. But I think to hear from them, I just think this thing, this portion of the monitoring needs to be maybe handled a little bit differently, rather than saying, "Are we in strict compliance?" I mean.
Can I restate in my words a little bit, trustee Thering?
Please.
What I heard, and I don't disagree with your comments, is maybe we need a better way to monitor additional data to help us know that we're in compliance. Is that a reasonable way to state it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, trustee, how?
I was just going to say, doesn't page 79 explain what they do?
I don't want to speak for you, trustee Thering, but what I heard, and I don't disagree with necessarily, is that it does describe all that, but we don't know those things are getting done and that those departments are getting the support they need.
I'm looking at, actually, I'm trying to look at it from more of a positive perspective. You're right. I believe them if they tell me we're getting it done, but that's just what I believe. That doesn't necessarily mean that is what's happening. They do have an advisor, which I think is important, but I think these departments are so important that geez, maybe Kim would like to talk about her department and some of the things that they're doing, maybe some of the things that they need, some of the classes she's taking, along with. I don't know. Is it okay for us just to take somebody's work for something, or should we know? If I'm saying we're in compliance, that means I know, and I don't, I don't personally know. An education on their, on what they do would be, I think, beneficial. On, on what they do would be, I think, beneficial.
Are you suggesting something like what Mr. Nanny did this evening for his department?
If they would be so inclined, or the board would like to know, uh, what they do. Yes, I would be interested in hearing something like that, but really, you know, I'd be curious as to what the rest of the board feels like. I don't want to.
Yeah, I agree with what you said.
Yeah, clerk Cody?
I mean, to answer these questions, I believe I'm in full compliance, but that's just me saying it, you know. So I, I mean, I can do a presentation like, you know, Director Nanny did today, and then kind of give you a rundown of what we do. Um, who I supervise, things like that, and just the day-to-day kind of thing, so everybody has an idea of what we do throughout the year. If you'd like.
I would be interested if, if they would be, if Kim and Lisa. The treasurer and clerk would be interested. I don't want to add to their already rigorous daily schedules, but. I think it would not only be good for the board, but I think it would be good for our community to know. Just exactly what they do and, and, and to be honest with you, if they needed more support from our board. Could please, this is, take that opportunity to ask.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah, so this question is for Kim, uh, 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 as the acting manager. Aren't, aren't we doing that? Isn't Mark planning on having you guys, just like Mr. Nanny did? And, uh, you, the department heads introducing yourself and going through each of your departments and kind of doing. Uh, what, what Mr. Danny just did, isn't that the plan that Mark had at each meeting? We're gonna have, uh, introduction from a department head?
Oh, yeah, mentioned it. No, but I, I could do that.
No, no, uh, that, that was, that question was for Kim, I, I, for Kim Smith, I believe that was. Uh, in Mark's agenda through some of the meetings carrying on, I was under the impression. That we are going to get a presentation from each department head as we move along. Didn't I hear that? Yes.
I, I, the only ones that I'm aware of, um, trustee Brown are, I know Sherri Teal made a presentation. I believe at your last meeting, um, Rodney made a presentation tonight. We did do, or, and I believe I will be making an additional presentation in the near future. I'm not sure if Mark has arranged with, um, the clerk and the treasurer to make a presentation.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. You answered my question.
My, my impression was, um, just the, the three other, um, staff directors, heads. Uh, department heads versus the elected official department heads, but I, I like, I like trustee Thering's idea. Um, as long as it doesn't overburden our clerk and our treasurer, I think it benefits. Our township, the board, and the community, uh, to better understand all responsibilities and how they deal with it, and that they are given the support they need.
You know, if they make the statements during their presentation, then we can, I think, faithfully. Answer the questions at the end, so make it all in one, in a sense, rather than having them do a presentation. And then later on, going through the, the policy.
I, I, I like, um, your perception or perspective, maybe is a better word. That it's hard for you to say we're in compliance without really knowing it, but based on what I know, I will say that. Um, both our clerk and, uh, treasurer are in compliance, but I agree that we need to know more to. Fully evaluate that and provide support.
I agree.
I agree.
Any other comments on, uh, item one? Yes, trustee How?
This is gonna happen at a later time, but they're gonna do this. I mean, we're not gonna do this tonight.
Correct, I, I don't think. We've got. Wouldn't, wouldn't be fair to put him on the spot like that.
We've got too many other things to get to, yeah.
Right.
Um, yeah, and it's almost ten.
Yeah, I, I figured tonight might be a little long, my apologies, uh, but we did have some important business tonight, and I want to make sure we did our due diligence. If, uh, if we're not in strict compliance, uh. Please indicate what you noticed that gives evidence that we're not in compliance. Um, I'm thinking we pretty well articulated that, unless somebody would like to add something to that. Um, how can we improve the process to be in full compliance? I guess I'll, I'll ask our clerk and treasurer if there's anything that you feel. Could be improved, because you have a better window into it than we currently do, but we would like a better window with it, into it, it sounds like.
I've went above and beyond on everything I can possibly do, and I don't think I can possibly improve more, other than telling you specifically what I.
Do you feel it? This is all working for you, treasurer Rice?
I mean, I, I think so, um, you know, the, the one thing that. Um, I know I have yet to do, um, and that is actually go to court with something. Um, I, I try to keep us out of court with tax stuff and, and get people to pay their bills. Um, you know, be, with, without going to court, um, so I, I do know that's something that's going to be. A new experience for me soon, so. Just working on that.
Training, training, training.
Yeah.
All right, uh, a, any further comments on this? I think this was productive. Thank you for your comments, trustee Thering. Moving on then, uh, we have item H, which was added to our agenda. Um, regarding Special Assessment District for Carriage Hill Estates, number one and number two subdivision. I'll be happy to hand this over to our acting manager to introduce this item.
Okay, thank you. Um, this was a addition to the agenda. There was an email, um, information to you yesterday. Uh, this is regarding, um, Carriage Hills Estates, one and two subdivision. Uh, Mr. Norm Worley, who spoke earlier in the evening during public comment, circulated the, uh, informal petition with his neighbors. To complete, um, to show interest to complete a, um. A repaving, or it's not a repaving, it's like, it's a, um, hold on, let me get to that picture. Overlay, as well as a one-inch, um, gravel shoulder in, within the subdivision. It's actually Carriage Lane. They did, we did review the information and the informal petition that was submitted by Mr. Worley on behalf of his neighborhood, and they did meet the, um, fifty-one percent of shown interest in the neighborhood. Actually, they exceeded that by quite a bit, and so we're presenting this for you tonight to, uh, move it to the next step, which would be. The, to ask the road commission, Isabella County Road Commission for a formal. Um, cost estimate, as well as prepare a formal petition to be circulated by the residents. Um, Mr. Norm, Mr. Worley would be given that to circulate to his neighbors to get signatures on a formal petition. And then there are several diff, several additional steps and two public hearings that have to be. Um, gone through in order to make this happen. In order to do a paving special assessment district, it is quite time-consuming and. There are a lot of steps for it to be legal to, um, to assess the residents for this type of work. But we do, the township does facilitate that portion, and then the work is actually completed by the Isabella County Road Commission. We just went, uh, very similar process for McGurk subdivision, so most of you were here for all. A lot of you were here for all of that, and some of you were here for the tail end of it, so you're, you're familiar with it. So that's what we're asking you to try to. Just accept the informal petition and direct the staff to move on to the next step.
I move to consider the approval. Uh, to prepare preliminary project cost estimates to develop a formal petition for the establishment of a paving special assessment district. For Carriage Hill Estates, one and two subdivision.
If you, okay.
We have a mo- motion by Bill.
Can we get rid of consideration? So just approve to.
Groove.
Prepare.
Uh, trustee Brown, you accept that amendment?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, so we have a motion by Bills, uh, support by Brown to approve the preliminary project cost estimates. Um, regarding the Carriage Hill Estates, uh, paving special assessment district is being proposed, uh, discussion. Yes, Brown?
Uh, Kim, you mentioned that they had to have fifty-one percent to move this forward. Do you know what percent? Or maybe that, that they had, uh, as far as, um, when we got the, the initial signatures?
Uh, it looks like they have a hundred percent.
That's what I heard. I just, I wanted to hear it from somewhere else. That, that's very impressive.
Yeah, that's, that's unheard of.
That is unheard of, and, and, and I'd just like, uh, I know Norm can't top. I, I, great work, great work on that. It makes our decision very easy. When we have that kind of participation. Outstanding job.
Right, and, and at this point, we're not asking for commitment from anyone. It's just moving the ball forward so they can get final numbers and. Final, a formal petition, et cetera, et cetera. I, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of this motion. Any other further discussion by our board?
No.
See none. Uh, we have a motion to approve the preliminary project cost estimates and develop a formal petition. For the establishment of a paving special assessment district for Carriage Hill Estates, number one and two subdivision. Clerk Cody, would you get us a roll call on that motion, please?
Treasure Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Supervisor Monkey?
Yes.
Trustee Help?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
And clerk Cody, yes, all yeses.
Thank you very much. That brings us item eleven on our agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. Uh, this is an opportunity for comments only, uh, questions will not be answered by the board at this time. Um, but if you do have questions, we, we do want them answered, uh, please call Township Hall at nine eight nine seven seven two forty-six hundred. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and, uh. Looking for the directions, uh, if you're new to Zoom, as earlier stated, uh, there is a. Looking for my reactions button at the bottom of your screen, which you click on, and it'll give you an opportunity to click on a raise your hand icon. If you're calling in via phone, uh, press star nine, and with that, we'll open extended public comment at ten oh one P M. And we'll give it a minute, because in these kinds of meetings, sometimes it's hard for people to find the, where to click. Those ladies are running tonight. I want to give the opportunity. Acting manager, am I correct? I'm not seeing any hands.
I don't see any hands either.
Give it one more brief moment. All right, see no one coming forward. Still watching, uh, we'll close extended public comment at ten oh two P M. That brings us to item twelve on our agenda, managers' comments. Acting manager, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Just a couple of quick ones. Um, I just wanted to let the board know, if you haven't already seen them, you might want to take a drive through. McDonald Park and take a look at the new scoreboards that the Little League has installed on. Sacco and Sullivan Fields. They're very nice. They did a very nice job, and, um, they look great. They're a great addition to the park and to the field. So if you haven't seen them, um, get a chance to drive through McDonald Park and take a look at them. Also, I wanted to let you know that if you haven't been by the Township Hall in the last week. We, um, did some landscaping there. There was a couple of different reasons we did that. One, the Township Hall was in need of a facelift. Um, and the second reason is, where the two parking lots join, one is higher than the other, and we've had recently some issues. In the last several years, we've had some issues with people driving off the higher parking lot. Into the lower parking lot, not realizing, and there's not a drive there. We talked about maybe putting a guard rail up, but, um. I wasn't very happy with that idea. I just didn't think it would be very, would look very nice at our Township Hall, so we have done some. Landscaping, a green scene, um, completed that for us, and it, it turned out very nice. So if you haven't been by, drive by, take a look at it. And then I just wanted to give you a short update on Jamison Park, phase two. We are, we are out for bids on that project. And, um, that we are slated to start construction after the August fourth election. So that Lisa will have use of the hall for the election, but that project is out for bid right now. And that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you very much. It was a nice meeting and kind of a long one, but we knew that would happen, and, and thank you.
Or Cody, you raise your hand. Do you have a question for the acting manager? I'll, I'll just comment on the, the landscaping between the two lots. One, you shocked me. I didn't, I did not know any better, or drove off the top level, but, um, it looks great. I think it looks great.
Three, I think will, will help.
Yeah. Uh, see no further questions, um, let's move on to final board member comment. And I'll start at the bottom right this time, uh, trustee Thering.
Um. Based on some of our discussion today, I think it would probably be a good idea in the near future to put back on the agenda, the two items that we. Were not able to discuss on May fifth, which was the solar panels and the, uh. Order. Policy. I'm sorry, I, if everything's just leaving my mind right now. Kim, you know what? Yeah, I, I, it was very well done. I appreciate what was there. We just ran out of time, and I'd, I'd like to revisit that. Um, if we could, i- if, if the rest of the board would be interested.
I, I would be, love to entertain both. Are there others?
Yes, I would too.
Perfect, all right.
There's your three.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, there was enough support here that, um, I want to make sure it was heard, so, uh, thank you for that comment, James. Do you have anything else?
Well, thank you.
Uh, trustee Bills?
I would also, in addition to the, uh, solar panels, I would like to discuss, um, you know, switching over to all L E D lighting in our township. But other than that, uh, thank you very much, Kim. You did a great job, and also thank you for doing a great job as the Public Works Director.
Yes, thank you, Kim. And thank you for those comments, Connie. Um, I'm sorry, trustee Bills. I, I slip out of formality sometimes, my apologies.
Um, no worries.
Trustee How?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Sheriff Maine for clarifying many things tonight. And the Council of Governments meeting that's gonna happen on August eighteen. I talked to Mark about it beforehand to make sure. I called Tara. There was nothing going on in either one of the pavilions that night. Um, Rick Irvin, the Township Supervisor for Isabella Township. Somehow he has connections. He's got food coming that night, and then I talked to Mark about it, and we're just gonna provide drinks. So.
Wonderful. Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I just, uh, one thing I wanted to touch on was the electronics, um. Uh, Kim, if we could get, uh, if, if we can find out, uh, where, you know, I, I guess we may be going back to in-person meetings here shortly. Uh, but, uh, in face meeting, I guess, I meant to say, but, um, as far as electronics that were, were coming. I don't know if you heard anything as far as when they're gonna be here for the, for the trustees. And then, uh, just, uh, the, the, the number, the second thing, just to piggyback off, uh, uh, trustee How and trustee Bills. Um, I wanted to thank Sheriff Maine and, uh, and, and Mr. Horton. Um, and then, uh, Kim, awesome job tonight. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, guys.
Um, in regards to the electronics, my understanding is those devices are here. They're being configured by C M S. And that they will be reaching out to each of you to do individual setup.
Perfect. Perfect, thank you, Kim. Exciting.
Yeah, uh, treasure rice?
I'm good.
Clerk Cody?
No, thank you, Kim, for doing a great job. Thank you, Sheriff Maine, for coming out and asking questions. Thank you, Jim Horton, for coming out and. Giving our county updates.
Yeah, I very much appreciate those county updates. Um, I also want to thank our public, um. Every time the public, public comes and speaks, I appreciate it, and I listen. Um, and regardless of how feelings are, they didn't go on deaf ears from my perspective. Um, I understand the concerns, you know. Um, I understand the concerns, you know, the, the issue we had before us tonight, I understand being controversial. Um, and, and having many opinions on all sides of, of that issue. Uh, but I do also appreciate the due diligence our planning commission did. I was very proud of their work. And I appreciate the diligence that this board took tonight in, in walking through that process, um. It's a pleasure to be here with all you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll take a motion to.
Rodney for being such a, you know, being on the agenda thirty times.
Yes, thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Rodney. I'd be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion by Brown, support by Rice, all in favor, raise your hand. Posed, raise your hand. It appears to be unanimous. With that, we'll close our Board of Trustees meeting at ten ten P M. Thank you all.
Have a good night.